Good evening and welcome to the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals meeting for October 27th, 2022. I just ask if everyone could take a moment and silence their cell phones. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by FALMHOCTV. Take a moment, just introduce what was of the zoning board of appeals and the staff. To my far right, to the board's left, is Jerry Potamus, who is an associate member. My name is James Morris. I am the chair of the zoning board of appeals. To my left is Scott Peterson, who is the vice chairman. To his left is Suzanne Murphy, who is a full voting member and clerk. And at the far end is Mark Fineran, who is a full voting member. We're also joined this evening by Norian Stockman, who is the zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, who is our recording secretary. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read the pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's attorney representative will have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making personal or derogatory statements. Any comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition or to ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair, should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but it is provided for the FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony will be taken. The board will then discuss the proposal amongst themselves, then make a motion to approve or deny an application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, a supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in a denial. Any zoning board of appeals decisions may be appealed as provided for in Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 17. So, good evening, everyone. First up, we have public comment. This public comment is for any matter that is not on the zoning board of appeals agenda this evening. And if anyone would like a copy of our agenda, there are some posted over on the chair there. Public is welcome to them. Do we have any public comment on any matter that is not before on the agenda this evening or not before the zoning board? Seeing none. Onto continuations. Up first this evening is Application 05722 Hanley, 237 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a conversion of the existing dwelling into four units, four dwelling units, excuse me, construct porch additions and a detached four-car garage for the applicant this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We're ready to talk. Please, one second. Let me get...
While he's doing that, I noticed my name's not in parentheses here. Am I allowed to vote? I thought I was there, but all my initials.
Yeah, so you'd be eligible to vote.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
You just weren't on the original panel, but yes.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification, Norian. Thank you, Jerry.
Good evening. Thank you. Again, Kevin Clower. I'm here tonight representing Brad Hanley and Eric McLaughlin, respective buyers of 237 Old Main Road and the applicants in this matter. Eric McLaughlin is here with us this evening. Mr. Hanley could not be here. As was noted, we are seeking approval for conversion of the existing 10-bedroom dwelling into four condominium units pursuant to 240-23B. As we discussed at the last hearing, this project does require multiple levels of approval. It requires not only a special permit from the zoning board, but also a site plan review from planning and a certificate of appropriateness from historical. The site plan review decision was issued this week, or voted this week, rather. I haven't actually seen it, but it was voted on Tuesday. And we are back before historical next week on Tuesday. We've made really good progress with historical. It's been some time since we were before this board, so I'd like to re-familiarize you with this project to discuss the plan, go over any questions. If the board feels ready, we could, of course, move forward. And if not, if they wanted to wait till historical is issued, certainly understand and would accommodate that. So this project, 237 Old Main, is located in the village of North Falmouth. It's walkable to the intersection of Old Main and County. It's on a well-sized lot. It's just under 40,000 square feet, residential B. There's currently a large residential building located near the front of the lot in need of some TLC. It is conforming to setbacks and lot coverage requirements. The existing lot coverage by structure is 8.6%. As this board knows, we're seeking to rehabilitate the existing structure and convert it into four units and to add a detached garage. This project would entail the rehabilitation of the existing dwelling, a new 10-bedroom Title V wastewater system, and that garage that was mentioned. Our bylaw under 240-23B allows for conversion of a dwelling into up to four units. It has a number of requirements. The house in existence as of January 1, 1980. This house was built in 1812. There's no home occupation or borders allowed, no additional bedrooms over those in existence as of January 1, 1980. We do have the referral from the health department that was issued. Scott McGann walked the property prior to the current damage to it with our engineer, Mike Borselli, and confirmed that there were, in fact, 10 bedrooms. And the conversion shall not involve material change to the exterior of the dwelling, which we'll discuss in more detail. The proposed garage is also allowable by special permit, which is 240-23G1. The building as existing and proposed complies with setback requirements as well as all lot coverage requirements, both by structure and structures, paving, and parking. We believe that this proposal is a good use of the existing development. It rehabilitates a historic, once-beautiful home. And I think it's long been discussed that in terms of production of units, it's best done with infill of existing development. It's a walkable area, and it's well-suited for conversion of this nature. We are aware of the correspondence submitted by the butters. As previously noted, there was a referral from the health agent who walked through the property, confirmed 10 bedrooms, but that was called into question. And they did submit the real estate listing plans, which, when I reviewed it, actually notes, well, depicts 10 bedrooms on the site. They were saying it's seven. But if you go through the floors based on the requirements for a bedroom, which is 70 square feet, privacy, window, there's no closet requirement, as is often thought. If you go through the floors and you count them, you get to 10 bedrooms. There's three on the first floor. There's two and one half at the second floor. There's three and another half of the second floor. And there's two on the third floor. So I count 10, which was, again, confirmed by our health agent. So I'm not really sure why it's even being questioned. As to the changes, there certainly are changes to the exterior that are being proposed. The bylaw prohibits material changes. There's no definition of material. My understanding of this through past applications has always been that that limitations does not prohibit change that could be sought by the owner in the normal course of business. It doesn't prevent the addition of a new entry. I'm aware of a special permit that this board issued relative to 39 Forest Avenue, which allowed for the installation of a new doorway and entry area for an additional unit, in that case, under this conversion bylaw. As I said, we're going through historical. Historical is reviewing our changes to make sure that they're appropriate. We believe that this project meets the necessary criteria for a special permit. Again, I'd be happy to address questions that the board has, and I have very little expectation for what happens this evening beyond refreshing your memory and bringing you up to speed as to where we stand on the plans.
Questions? Jerry?
Question. What authority does this board have to overrule the board of health's decision on number of bedrooms, if any?
It's not a board of health decision. It's a determination by the health agent.
I'm sorry. Okay.
I honestly don't know, Mr. Potamus. It's an interesting question. It's never come up to my knowledge, or at least that I've been around for. It's not, there's no evidentiary standard for proving the number of bedrooms. We've established it by not only the plans that the butters have provided, but also by the health agent's determination. In almost any other circumstance, I don't think we'd even be having this conversation because we've given you two forms of proof there.
Thank you. Scott?
Yeah, you know, pain points on this one, right? It's the bedrooms, and it's also the material change on the exterior components where, I mean, personally, it's nice looking what they're attempting, your applicants looking to do, but, again, I struggle a little bit with what's material and what isn't material, but we don't have a definition of it either.
So it comes down to a subjective question.
Correct.
And, you know, to me, a material change is an addition. You want to add a new kitchen wing. You want to add a new living room area. We're not trying to do that. We're using the existing footprint. We're changing entrances, for the most part.
Have there been any other conversations with the butters in the interim since last time we had you?
We've been in pretty constant contact with the butters. There hasn't been much in the way of changes in the plans. Oh, I shouldn't say that. There's been some changes to the plans, certainly in response to planning comments, historic comments, comments the butters raised at those hearings. I think, I don't think there's any question, what's being proposed is a really well-designed building that would be an attractive addition to the neighborhood. We just need to make sure that you can approve it.
Correct. Thank you.
Suzanne?
The board of assessors said six bedrooms?
I believe so, but the assessors' board has never really been probative of bedroom count. We have definitions that we've relied on, the Title V definitions, the definition that's always been used, to my knowledge. There's any number of situations where you might have a three-bedroom house, but you have an office that could constitute a bedroom. So that's a fourth bedroom, which is, that's why we do those cased openings on so many of these applications.
Okay. What?
I find nowhere in here where it says that we can accept a walkthrough by the board of health in 2018 when the standard is what existed as of January 1, 1980. And in addition to that, which is what I was starting to approach the last meeting, you have that as a total of 3,426 square feet. And the proposed is 5,836 square feet. I just can't...
I'm sorry, we're...
On your application.
That's the footprint. The footprint, and that's taking into account the garage.
The garage as well.
So there's no change in the footprint of the building?
Okay. Well, again, as I stated initially, I see no evidence here of 10 bedrooms existing as of January 1, 1980. And I may have missed it because I haven't been informed of any additions to the file since the last meeting, but I see nothing in writing from the board of health. I could be mistaken in that.
The health referrals in the file.
Is it in the file? Yeah.
Referral from board of health indicates that the health agent had walked the property and appears to have been 10 bedrooms. That's basically all it says.
I mean, this bylaw is becoming, you know, like a lot of issues in our bylaw, it's proving problematic as time goes on. We have standards that hark back to when the changes were taken place, January 1, 1980. Or if you look at the provision regarding two units on a lot, what existed as of April 15, 1959. And these standards become harder and harder to substantiate because we move further away from those dates. So here we are, 42 years after that date in question, and we have to rely on the evidence that's in front of us. We know that there were no renovations or upgrades to this building over the last few decades. We have a statement from the health agent, which is what's typically relied upon when there's a referral from the health board. I'm not quite, you know, we could, we can probably go and get affidavits that there's been no upgrades since 1980. We've seen no evidence of building permits since that time. But, you know, it becomes a tilt at windmills to some extent to, you know, to show this once we have some proof. You know, there's no evidentiary standard for this. So it's to the board's satisfaction. I think that the referral from the health agent, I think, the fact that we know there's been no building permits or additions to this property over the past few decades, that should probably be enough. I'm not quite sure what more we can offer that would scratch that itch.
In my mind, the standards of the bylaws haven't been met.
But I'm not sure what standard you're referring to. I'm not sure what additional information...
What existed as of January 1, 1980. I don't see any reference here to a walkthrough or any other standard. And, I mean, a walkthrough in, respectfully, a walkthrough in 2018 by no means equates with what existed in January 1, 1980.
In the absence of other evidence, I'm not quite sure what we can provide to you, Mr. Fineran. I think that what we're provided, I think, should be enough evidence. I don't particularly want to go round and round on this because it seems clear you're not satisfied with what we've provided. I'm not quite sure what else we can provide.
Just to move this along, I do think we're going to be looking at a continuation. My personal feeling is I'd like to see what historical has to say. Certainly, we're going to let the butters speak this evening, and you can address their concerns either tonight or at a later point. My suggestion, my issue, is that I don't have a problem necessarily referring, having a problem relying on what the health agent has said. What I would prefer to see on the record is just a supplement of, are we relying on the health department's definition of a bedroom, that 10 bedrooms were in existence at this residence, or that there are 10 bedrooms making this convertible? Are we relying on building code definitions? If you could just fortify the record a little bit about...
Sure.
How you're coming to the definition of a bedroom, why you believe there are 10 bedrooms. I think that would be helpful for the board.
Sure. And I'd be happy to submit that in writing, but just so, for the record, in looking and reviewing the plans, I've relied upon a Title V definition, which is the definition I've always relied upon for defining a bedroom.
And clearly, if you want to supplement the record with some affidavits or from previous owners or so on, or from the building department, I think that might be helpful to show what was in existence circa 1980, or that nothing else has been amended or changed since then. Any follow-up questions? No? No, thank you. Public comment? Please come up, sir.
My name is Tony Petrucci, 243 Old Main Road. I'm a direct abuter. The, what we provided you with our October 24th letter, Exhibits A through E, are a perfect example of the bedrooms that existed. There are photographs, there's a floor plan, and per Section 240-23B 3, it's talking about pre-existing bedrooms. If you look at the applicant's plan, it says existing AO1 and AO2, practically every bedroom, every room in that house is marked as a bedroom. But oddly enough, there are no kitchens on that plan where it says existing. Now, I don't know of any house that doesn't have a kitchen that pre-existed. So what we believe, or what we contend, is that the applicant used Title V to decide what rooms might be a bedroom in order to create a septic plant. But Title V, there's nowhere in our bylaws that allows Title V to be substituted for what is considered existing bedrooms. Existing bedrooms are existing bedrooms. The photographs we gave you, the floor plans we gave you, the letter from the listing broker all show you what existed in that house. Now, we can get the listing broker to maybe sign another letter, but the letter's right there. We gave it to you as part of the exhibit. So there are only, there are not 10 bedrooms in that house. There are no 10 bedrooms. I don't know what we saw when that went flying by, but the photographs are what exist. So there are only up to seven bedrooms in that house. The board of assessors, I know that no one likes to use the board of assessors, but that's as of 2018. There's seven bedrooms. I have six bedrooms. All right? Back in 2000, the assessors' office said there were five bedrooms, so I, it's got to be close to what we're saying. It's going to be six, or it's going to be seven, but it's not 10 pre-existing bedrooms. So all we can say is you've got Exhibits A through E that show exactly what was in the house. The term is "pre-existing" per Section 240-23B 3. We don't know what else we can do but to provide that proof, and we, I think we've done that. And it's up to the applicant to show why Title V definition of a bedroom can be used in place of pre-existing bedrooms. There's nothing in the zoning bylaw that allows Title V to be used in this case. The health inspector can walk through 10 times, but there is still no 10 bedrooms. So you have the evidence before you, and we have to leave it in your good hands to decide if there are six, seven, or 10 pre-existing bedrooms. Thank you for listening to me.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
As far as the elevations are concerned, the way you've seen them, do you have any concerns with the outside modifications to the...
We think the architect did a beautiful job with a lot of consideration to the historic district. We'll have to leave that up to the historic commission. What we don't like, all right, yes, material change, you have no definition. And in our letter, we talk about with no definition in the bylaws, we have to turn to Webster's Dictionary, which we did. We supplied you with those definitions. That's the only thing we could do. There are material changes according to Webster's Dictionary, but we think it's done quite nicely. Do we like a 62-foot four-car garage there? No, but you've got to put the car in someplace. Do we want the second-floor roof decks? No, but that's up to you folks to decide whether or not that's material or not. Are four new entryways on the north side material changes? Well, yeah. It's a material change. Decks are a material change. But again, that's up to the board to decide what that is. There's no definition. We've provided you with Webster's definition, and that's all that can be done. As far as more detrimental to the neighborhood, well, I'm going to leave that one alone for now. They've done a nice job, a very, very nice job, designing the exterior of that home. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up question or inquiry? It's always been this board's understanding, based on a letter from the assessor, that the assessors is trickly for value of the property. Anything else, unless they've inspected the house, or there's a deed reference or anything else, go talk to Ms. Favouli. This is the way I've always understood how you balance assessors' record saying one thing and public comment offering another opinion.
I have done that. That's why we gave you the photographs and the floor plan. Any other questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other public comment? Would you like to respond briefly, Mr. Clower?
Just a quick response. Thank you, Mr. Morris. I think that we have a history of rooms that are not necessarily labeled bedrooms, still being considered bedrooms. And a home office is a perfect example. So that library, it's a perfect example. That library meets every definition of a Title V bedroom. If I was proposing a new plan where I was adding a room of that nature, the board of health would say, "That's a new bedroom. It could be used as a bedroom." They wouldn't allow it unless there was a cased opening. So that's the definition, and that's the standard we've relied on, the same one that we've relied on for every other application that comes before this board.
Follow-up questions?
Just a comment. It still doesn't meet the standards of the bylaw. We need proof what existed as of January 1, 1980. I don't think the standards have been met.
Historical is going to give you a decision next week?
We're back before historical on Tuesday. I'm not sure we'll have a decision. It's my hope. I think we've addressed all of their concerns. There might be one or two site plan tweaks they're looking for relative to mailbox location or location of the gas connection, but I think that would really be it. So I think, my hope is that if we can get through them on Tuesday, and if there might be some administrative changes to the plan.
Do you have a continuation date in mind, Norian?
November 17 would be first possible.
Is that going to be enough time to modify any changes based on historical's ruling?
Bear with me for one second.
You have to have material in by the week of November 17.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's three weeks. That should be, hopefully, enough time. We have historical on Tuesday and the first. I think we should be able to do that, and if not, we'll let the board know in advance and request a continuance.
Any follow-up questions for us about what I think we're looking from you?
I think I, you know, the board's been clear. I think we, there are the pinch points, as Mr. Peterson described, that I think we can address.
As always, please keep trying to work with your butters to satisfy their issues or concerns.
Motion to continue to November 17?
Seconded by Scott. Seconded by Mark. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. That's a vote. Thank you, Mr. Clower.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Application 06522, NICA Development LLC, 259-263 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise the existing structures and construct two duplex buildings and one single-family dwelling on a combined parcel. For the applicant.
Was this written to the record last time? I think we continued without, I don't know if we opened it up.
I wasn't here, but I don't think anything was just continued.
No, we need to open. We need to open. Could you just read the public notice, please?
It's an application from NICA, if I'm saying it correctly, Development LLC, 44 Carroll Street, in Mass. It's an application to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-3C and 240-51A (5) of the Code of Falmouth to raise the existing structures and construct two duplex buildings and one single-family dwelling on a combined parcel located at 259 and 263 Old Main Road, Falmouth, Mass. Let's see what I have in here. Marine, nothing. Applied to the zoning board, no, this is nothing. Orange Coastal. The subject property is 44 square feet combined of B3 and RB zone land located within the Rans Canal Coastal Pond overlay and Historic District. And we'll go back to this. And concombs, the board of, wait a minute, applied to the zoning board of appeals, the subject, I just read that one, sorry, engineering. Do you have the whole engineering thing, Kevin? Oh, he's talking. This application was reviewed for impacts to the public right-of-ways and public utilities. Old Main Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approval for driveway permit for the engineering division prior to the closing of the hearing for this special permit, or that the board include the following condition. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of others or the public right-of-way. The address assignment comments are in the planning board review. Upon completion of construction, the applicant... Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per law affixing illegible numbers required time limit for compliance. The plan set includes a demolition and erosion control plan on Sheet 6 of 6. This plan can be used in the driveway permit application. The engineering division will be responsible for oversight of erosion controls protecting the town right-of-way. The planning board will be responsible for the oversight of the erosion controls under site plan review if approval is obtained. Drywells are included as we typically recommend. As noted in our planning board review, approval to remove a tree on Old Main Road is required from the tree warden. And there are several planned concerns brought up by the planning board review. We defer to the, to the board if these concerns should be addressed prior to the approval of this special permit or through the planning board's site plan. And I don't know if you want me to read the whole planning board review?
I don't believe so at this point. I think the, one second, Mr. Clower?
They haven't actually voted on anything yet, so we're still, we're still going through the process.
It's very long. Fire department, no issues. Health board, no issues. No issues with this project, though it counts as 16 bedrooms, and the septic appears to be designed for 15.
That's been remedied.
Water department, the Board of Appeals, let's see, your comments, the town water is available to the site. The DPW will allow perform one tap into the existing man on Old Main. The proposed demand would determine the size of the tap and pipe entering the property. Each unit will require a one-inch service or greater with its own individual curb stop. Each unit will also require a 5/8 water meter or greater installed inside the building. And then planning, and that's it.
Thank you again for the record, Kevin Clower. I am here representing the applicant's NICA Development LLC, the manager of which Greg Persson is here with us this evening. They are the owners of 259 and 263 Old Main. As I said, Greg is here, as well as Tim Santos from Merrill Engineering. Greg Saruniyan from ResCom Architecture is the architect on this. He is not here this evening. This property is located in North Falmouth, about 150 feet from our last application. In my kingdom for them to be slightly further apart right now, but here we are. It is two lots that are to be merged relative to this application, proposing one single-family residence and two duplexes on the front lot. The combined lot will have total square footage of 44,438 square feet, and it is a split-zone lot with the front portion being Business 3 and the rear portion being Residential B. Currently, there is a dilapidated single-family dwelling located near the front of the lot. That dwelling is non-conforming. The front yard setback, it's 19.2 feet, where 25 is required. On the rear lot on 263, there is a barn, which is non-conforming in two ways. One, it is, has a setback of just like zero, it's on the property line where 10 is required. And in addition, it's, it is an accessory structure without a primary structure on that lot. What we're proposing, as I said, is two duplexes to be located in the business zone and a single-family residence to be located in Residential B zone, a total of five units of housing on this split-zone lot, and that would be pursuant to 243C and 240-51A5. As with our past application, this is currently before planning and historic. Continued hearings are scheduled with both for the next few weeks. Historic, we are back before on November 1st, and planning, we were there on this past Tuesday, and we are going back on the 22nd of November. Permission has been requested from Historical to raise the existing home, as it has no historical or architectural significance. And given that those reviews are ongoing, we don't expect a decision from this board tonight. But this hasn't been opened yet. We wanted to introduce the plans, to field any questions that the board may have, to field any questions that the butters might have, and to move it forward as quickly as we can. So this combined lot of just over 44,000 square feet would have lot coverage by structure of 19.2%, which is below the 20% allowed by right in Residential B and below the 35% allowed by right in Business 3. The lot coverage by structures, paving, and parking would be 30.5%, again below the 40 allowed in Residential and the 65% allowed in Business. Each of those two duplex, each of those two duplexes would have, would be three bedrooms with a one-car garage, and a single-family home at the rear would have four bedrooms. There was a new 16-bedroom Title V wastewater system proposed, which was submitted to the board. These buildings, as performed, eliminate the non-conforming aspects of this property. It eliminates the non-conforming front yard setback, side yard setback, and the fact there was an accessory structure without a primary structure. And the proposed buildings comply with lot coverage requirements, setback requirements, sorry, lot coverage by structures and by structures, paving, and parking as well as setbacks. Under 243C, pre-existing non-conforming structures can be changed by special permit, provided they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. The board knows they're supposed to consider 240, 216, and whether or not the proposal creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas in the public ways, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new non-conformity created. All the existing non-conformities are eliminated. The proposal does not impair views and vistas of the public, and it does fit with the neighborhood because, as has been pointed out, North Falmouth has had a number of similar developments. 240-51A5 allows for multifamily use, provided that the density is less than six units per acre. The business zone would not be adversely, adversely affected in the uses in the business zone and not noxious to multifamily housing. The board has reviewed developments of this nature, reviewed and approved developments of this nature on a number of occasions. Fieldstone Place condominium, which was application 7201 on Westmoreland Drive, the zoning board approved six units on 1.2 acres on a split-zone lot. The board calculated the permitted density based on the entire lot, which included public use, Business 3, and Residential B, and allowed the single-family dwelling to be located on the Residential B portion of that lot. Appeal number 13805, which was 270 Old Main Road, allowed multifamily use of eight units on 1.5 acres, including three existing duplexes in the business section and a new duplex on the general residence section. Similar findings were also made for the Westwind condominiums on West Falmouth Highway as well as 587 Main Street. More recently, the board allowed a similar development at 641 West Falmouth Highway. The board found that the existing garage on the rear of the lot was non-conforming and allowed for construction of a single-family home on the Residential B portion of that lot, as well as a duplex in the business zone portion. We believe that this project meets the criteria for a special permit. However, as I noted, we understand we have some revisions to the plans to make relative to site plan and historic, but we wanted to use this opportunity to address any questions from the board or the public. I'd be happy to address or to field those questions now.
Questions for the board, start with Mark. Oh, I'm sorry.
I only did three letters that I'd like to read. One, one has requested to read it in. There are three letters, two letters in opposition. Is it okay if I read it?
Sure.
As a synopsis of our October 24-22 letter to the zoning board of appeals regarding 259-263 Old Main Road, we've requested the following, following be read into the record. The applicant has requested a special permit to construct five units utilizing zoning by law Section 240-3C and 240-51A. By combining 259 and 263 Old Main Road into one lot containing 44,438 square feet, said five new units will be two duplex units in the B3 district and a combined lot, one single-family in the RB district of the combined lot. Number one, zoning by law Section 240-51A allows up to six units per acre in the B3 district. This person's conclusion, the abutters believe the applicants may be merging unit density per acre allowed in the B3 district with the RB district of the two-merge lot to include a fifth unit being a single-family unit within the RB district. Adding the land area of the RB district to the 263 Old Main, to the B3 district on 259 Old Main provides the applicant with the ability to develop up to six units per acre only within the B3 district, utilizing applicable setbacks, but no additional units in the RB district. Conversely, if the two lots are joined together to form one larger lot and the existing house in the B3 district is raised, the applicant could build one single-family unit, but not the duplex units. Therefore, the applicant may, might receive a special permit to build either the proposed two duplex units within the B3 zone utilizing all setback requirements, or a buy-right building permit for a one single-family unit within the combined lot once the existing non-conforming house is raised, but not both the duplexes and the single-family unit. Number two, B3 district zone line area of 259 Old Main Road. After conferring with the town's engineering department, department and the GIS mapping department, instead of receiving dimensional confirmation of the area defined on the applicant's site plan, as B3 remains unconfirmed and possibly in question, we provide the ZBA with reference to the town meeting minutes of November 14th, 2018, Volume 2-171, line 22, as it regards to Article 25. There was a discussion regarding the B3 district history going back to its inception in 1926, in which it was indicated the B3 district is only 100 feet deep, and if the 100 feet depth is accurate, one of the proposed duplexes may be outside of the B3 district. So I just wanted to read that in. I apologize for missing it before. That's all I have.
Questions? Mark?
Relative to the back lot, is that now, or has it ever been a buildable lot?
I don't know if it's a buildable lot right now. We haven't done that analysis, but regardless, it can be merged with the, the front lot. Doesn't affect the fact that it could be built upon in the future if it was merged.
Well, a buildable lot in the B3 would require 40,000 square feet, which isn't there.
We'd have a combined lot, we'd have a combined lot here of 44,000 square feet once they're merged. We have two existing lots on, on, within this development, well, within this project.
So if they aren't merged now, wouldn't the answer to my question, is it a buildable lot, be no?
I, I know of a few lots that have been built on with town without frontage that have rights of ways granting them access. So without running through a full analysis, replying for a building permit to the, to the building department, you know, ultimately, that's the only way you know if a lot's buildable.
Is there a right of way? And do you have any documentation of that?
Yeah, there is an easement that's recorded, the Pronto Registry of Deeds. I have a copy, I'd be happy to provide to the board, but provides access from Old Main Road only for the purpose of 263 Old Main. If access is 263, which is that rear lot.
I went back into the registry of deeds and I, and in 1970, it was, both lots were owned by the Wiswells, I believe, and I'm not good at reading it, but I thought it mentioned that there was access to that lot from County Road, and I could be incorrect because it's kind of a complicated affair.
That's, that's just the deed with the reservation of easement for the record. I don't know whether or not there might potentially be any access to County Road. We're not proposing that.
I don't know if it's dated right. Don't. And this is the easement here?
That is, that's a deed with a reservation of an easement. Towards the bottom of the page, it says.
All right. I have no further questions at the moment.
Suzanne?
When you have the business district, doesn't there need to be a buffer to the residential?
No.
Not at all?
Not that I'm aware of.
Quite on the line.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Don't lie out.
Scott? Mr. Finer pointed him out, and I'm sure in like an item four in the planning board is the access, driveway access. I believe that might be the document that you just passed on to the board.
So there, there is, there is duty to access. That access only provides access, that, that, sorry, that easement only provides access to the portion of this property known as 263 Old Main, and that is, that's there. And there is an existing dirt path or dirt driveway path, I don't know what you want to call it, there right now.
Okay. Thank you. Jerry?
No questions at this time.
I have one, just one more.
Go ahead, Mark.
Doesn't, wouldn't that access need, I don't know if it's either A, depending on the zone, either 80 or 100 feet frontage?
No, you can have, you can have an easement that provides you access without frontage. And if I can just make a quick comment about the letter that was read in by the butter. Generally speaking, their, their assessment of split-zone lots is correct, but what that doesn't account for is the existing non-conformity in the rear lot. The zoning board is consistently allowed for alteration of non-conforming uses and for single-family structures to be allowed on, in split-zone lots with those single-family structures being located in the residential portion when there's been an existing non-conformity.
Can you address the issue about the actual boundaries of the zoning district that was raised?
That's really an engineering question. Mr. Santos is here. That's something we're trying to figure out with the planning board, because it doesn't seem to be really written down anywhere exactly where that boundary is, which seems like something we should probably know.
Kind of an important.
That's something that we are working on with the planning board right now.
Okay.
I'm back. For the record, Tony Petrucci, 243 Old Main Road, and this one's on the other side of me. Let me quickly answer the question about, is it a buildable lot, 263? It is not because I'm looking at a September 3rd, 2021, building permit rescinded letter from the building department saying that 263 was not buildable. So that letter of rescission is right here. So 263 is not buildable because the right-of-way does not provide frontage. All right? That right-of-way is to pass and repass. In fact, it can't even be improved. I talked to the owner, whose land it goes over today, and it cannot be improved. He will not allow it to be improved in any form whatsoever because in his mind, it is to pass and repass. So as we, as it regards 240-51A5, and combining the two lots together to get over an acre so you can have six units per acre, whether or not this board or any board has approved in the past the use of a residential B district to put, in this case, a single-family home in combination with six acres, six units per acre in the B3 zone, everything doesn't matter because the zoning bylaw does not allow it. You can't extend the density use in the B3 zone to a more restricted use in the residential B zone. Whether it's done, has been done in the past, we'd have to, I guess, reexamine that. But the density only applies to the B3 zone, not to the residential B zone. So our contention continues to be that if you tear down the existing house, and you have a combined lot that creates frontage, you can build a single-family home. Or conversely, you can build the two duplexes in the B3 zone, but not the single-family in the residential B zone. There's no frontage whatsoever. As to the question of how deeply the B3 zone extends into the lot, what we told you about, what we found at the November 14th, 2018 town meeting, when the history was discussed about the B3 district, that says 100 feet. Tuesday night, it came up at the planning board meeting, and I spoke with Jeb Cornoch, the planner, that they now have some information, but they're not 100% sure that it might be only 125 feet. But whether it's 100 feet back in the lot or 125 feet back in the lot, those two back duplexes will be outside of the B3 zone. So it's either exactly as the applicant's engineer has laid it out, or it's 100 feet back as the history outlines, or it's 120 feet, 25 feet back as the planning board now has some information, but Jeb Cornoch said he wasn't really sure. So our contention stands that you're either going to have two duplex lots in the front if you have the B3 district appropriately located, or conversely, you're going to have one single-family house, but you can't have both under that particular zoning bylaw. Whether this has been done before, there's nothing, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but there's nothing in that that says you can do that for density purposes. So if there are any questions, other than that, thank you.
So given that.
If I may just.
Oh, certainly.
Just a few quick points. Whether or not the abutting property owner wants to let the right-of-way be improved or not, case law is very clear that grant of an easement allows the, includes the right to improve it. You can run utilities down a right-of-way, you can pave it, you can do an awful lot of things, and that's not, unfortunately, not a question for the abutting property owner to decide. It's very clear in case law.
We're not the land court, we're not going to get involved in those.
And also, I just note that Mr. Petrucci, I think, is incorrect regarding the density. Again, the case law is quite clear. When you have a split-zone lot.
Again, the case law is quite clear, when you have a split-zone lot, you can take credit for the full square footage within the parcel. You can only do the allowed uses within the districts that allow them. There's, there's ample case law on it, that this board has reviewed a number of times. The reason we're proposing the single-family structure in the rear is because we have an existing nonconformity, which the board can allow for that to exist as well. But in terms of calculating the density, you can calculate density based on the entirety of the lot, not just the portion of the lot within the zoning district.
Follow-up? Mark?
This easement, first off, has there ever been a house constructed on that lot in the rear?
I have no idea. There hasn't been one for a number, for quite some time, but I have no, I can't tell you there's never been a house back there.
So, this easement was, of course, I'm just guessing, probably granted just for access to that barn?
Quite potentially.
Now, would the use for a house be overuse of that easement?
No. That's not how overburdening of an easement works.
Are you sure?
Overburdening of an easement would be granting it to other, other owners. So if we tried to extend the right to use that easement to other, other properties, that would be an overburdening of the easement. Using the easement for access to and from that lot, exactly as is described in the grant of the easement, or the reservation of the easement, it would be using it for entirely the purpose it was granted for.
Okay, so was that why you changed on the last plan? Access to the second duplex?
Yes, that's exactly.
From the easement to the?
Mm-hmm. Because even if it's merged, that right doesn't extend to the front portion of the lot. It would only be true for the rear portion, the 263 portion, which is what we're doing.
So, previous to this week, it did overburden that easement, then?
We submitted the change, well, we've had the change plans in the works for quite some time, but nothing's been overburdened, because nothing's been done yet.
I understand, but the granting, or whatever. Okay, I have, except, I think, Maureen, that we should have Town Council weigh in on this split lot. I know that we were provided the supplement from planning, but some of that legal lease gets a little difficult, and I didn't see how anything exactly equated to this. So, I think if we could get Town Council to weigh in before the next, we're continuing, I'm sure, it would be certainly helpful.
I would agree with that, that's fair for the board.
If I can make a request, I suspect I know what the answer is, but I'm going to ask regardless. It's very difficult when we come to a hearing and find out Town Council's issued an opinion that we haven't had a chance to read or respond to. If it's possible, if the board would be willing, I understand that the position is Town Council's product, is work product for the of the town, but it makes it very difficult for us to respond when it's handed to us the night of the hearing, or we're told that there's a, there's an opinion, but I, we haven't seen it. So if there's any possibility of that opinion being shared in advance of the hearing, I would greatly appreciate it. I understand if it can't, but I'm simply making a request.
I think that's a reasonable request.
So, just to speak to that point, and while I appreciate the point that Mr. Clower is making, the point that Town Council made was that if their opinion is shared with opposing council, opposing council will bring a reply to what Town Council wrote, and you will not have a subsequent reply from Town Council. So, that's just something for you to weigh.
I just want to, I have trouble with the characterization of opposing council, because this is not oppositional.
I, I'm sorry, I just mean another party.
I just think it's important to keep that parameters in mind, because this is, it's not supposed to be oppositional.
Because they're essentially giving you advice, so their preference is that you review that advice and then vote to release or not. So I understand that creates a timing issue. But that's, that's their position.
Mr. Chair, wouldn't you say that if we vote to release, which the letter always says, that night, we're going into continuation anyways, and the applicant's counsel has a chance to rebuff? I understand, and maybe, and haven't been as sensitive to it, confidentiality of attorney-client, but I've always thought this is an open forum. It just doesn't seem right that the applicant and the public don't have a right to an opinion by Town Council, because this is only quasi-judicial at best. And that's my opinion of, so I agree with Mark, I think.
Well, you did until the last comment, because if you go into our rules and procedures, the only ones that have to abide by the seven-day rule are the applicants. But in the same, well, on the same subject, just so we don't have to bat this ball back and forth a whole nother hearing, perhaps we could have Town Council weigh in on the possibility, this is just coming out of my head, does the merger of the two lots into one actually negate the easement? Because the easement was only for 263? That's something that's well over my head.
My suggestion about these issues relating to law and opinion of counsel.
That's what I mean. That's why I wanted to add that to.
Yeah, that's fine. I would suggest that, I certainly understand Attorney Clower's position, but my suggestion is, the board is entitled to receive opinions of counsel, and to rely on those in its deliberative process. The board does have the authority, if that opinion is contrary to what the applicant's contention of the law is, I would suggest, if the board is going to rely on that, that we at least give the applicant opportunity to submit, to ask for a continuance and to submit a rebuttal or so on, and the board could, at that point, vote to release what the opinion of counsel is. As an attorney, I don't like giving up privileged communications. Municipal government has the right to request and rely on its Town Council or outside council to render opinions of legal, legal opinions, excuse me. So, I'm against just blanketly releasing a request from Town Council, but I also want to make sure that the rights of an abutter, as well as an applicant, are preserved so that they can respond if that information is to their detriment. So that would my suggestion is not to request the information from Town Council, if it is adverse to the position that the applicant is taking, we can vote to either release what they're saying, or give them the opportunity to file their own.
If I can make perhaps another question, suggestion, I don't expect Town Council or Assistant Town Council would divulge their opinion to me, but if we can have the authority to provide Town Council with information directly, it might expedite, and if you want to make your request or your, your argument to Town Council, I have no problem with that.
I just want to, I don't want to be in a position where they say, well, it has to go through, and whatever submitted to them would obviously be submitted to the zoning board.
You want to submit your case law, your argument to Town Council, before they deliberate report back to us, I have no problem with that.
That'd be helpful.
But it should come to the board anyway.
It comes to the board in confidence.
Yes.
Until, until a board vote to release.
No, no, I meant the information.
Anything I submit to Town Council would be submitted to the board.
Yes, that's fine.
Yes.
Is that satisfactory to everyone, to make sure your questions are answered?
Yes.
Just wanted to add my question to it.
Any other public comment? So, we're looking at a continuation, I know you've got some, both planning and historical.
I don't think the 17th makes sense. So beyond the 17th, I know that gets us into Thanksgiving and.
So, we were looking at December 8. I don't know if that sounds reasonable.
Is that a good night for you, Mr. Clower?
I'm not going anywhere for months, so yeah.
We'll make a motion to continue till December 8.
Motion by Suzanne to December 8 is her second.
Second.
We've got the jury, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, it's a vote.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your time this evening on this matter.
Next up, we're into new hearings. We have 075-22, Blue Moon Sea Grill Incorporated, 159 Main Street, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow parking reduction for the proposed restaurant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fenner.
Before we go any further, there's a submission that, due to being out of town and problems with my computer, it in fact wasn't presented to us until the 25th, and I didn't get to read it until the 26th, and I did not have time to even go through it, so.
This application, or?
So, I move that we continue this hearing to the next possible date, until I can have time to review what was presented on the 25th.
Maureen, for you.
So, I think where you have abutters here who have been noticed, it would perhaps be optimal, I think clearly we do have to continue the case because of the late submission. That being said, I think it's probably fair to offer the abutters an opportunity, they're represented as well, to have a conversation with the board.
You'd be satisfied, Mr. Member Fenner, if we know there will not be a vote on this matter?
Oh, I would not want to put the public out in any fashion, but as I said, I wasn't able to review. So any information they're willing to offer is perfectly acceptable.
There are some issues, I think, that we're not going to come to a decision this evening, so I'm going to ask that the hearing open and, and the notice be read.
Okay. We have an application, 075-22, Blue Moon Sea Grilling, 681 Falmouth Road, Mashpee, Mass. Applies to the zoning vote of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-107B to allow parking reduction for the proposed restaurant. The subject property is 159 Main Street, Falmouth, Mass. Let's see what kind of comments we have. I have from Jed. It appears the parking analysis is not provided. Due to a lack of data supporting the request for the parking reduction, it is difficult to discern if the downtown parking area can accommodate this new demand. Ideally, a parking turnover study would be completed to demonstrate the capacity, especially during the summer months when demand is at its peak. That's from Jed Cornoch. Then we have Maureen. No comment. Engineering, quite a bit. Do you want me to read it all?
I don't think it's.
I can.
I don't think it's necessary, unless the applicant would like it read into the record. It's going to be continued, so.
Okay. Concom, no comment. Water, no comment. Legal address is 153 Main, engineer should grant and approve a number for the new business prior to permits being issued. The building in the rear has a right-of-way that appears to block, to be blocked by the deck. Planning. They have a site, site plan review application scheduled on October 25th. And I have 97 signatures of support, three letters of support, and two letters of concern. That's what we have.
For the applicant.
Mr. Chair, I have a public disclosure.
Go right ahead.
Deal with me. This, it gets a little convoluted, but, Blue Moon Sea Grill is the application before us tonight, and Bogosian Development LLC has applied to the Planning Board for a special For purposes of the application before the ZBA tonight, I presume that a financial interest exists between Blue Moon Sea Grill, Bogosian Development LLC, and Longfellow Design Build. Longfellow Design Build is renovating a portion of my kitchen. Countertops and a surround around the fireplace. Given this, it's a relatively small project, Longfellow is probably one of, Longfellow Design Build is probably one of the largest developers in town. I did not receive, the prices I received were consistent, and my decision to go with Longfellow Design Build was a question of timing. Having said this, I believe I can be fair, what's the proper word? I feel I can perform my official duties objectively in feeling. Thank you. I guess the board can comment based on our procedures or the attorney.
The applicant has no objection whatsoever to Mr. Potemis's service. I do note that the applicant here is the tenant, and I'll also tell you that the terms of the lease won't change by the determination of the board in this matter. So actually, I'm not sure that Longfellow has, has an interest, a financial interest in the outcome.
Did you, Mr. Samus, did you file your disclosure with the town clerk?
No.
Select, so you get a select board?
No, this is with our clerk, unless I misread it. I thought this goes to us, and the other ones goes to the town clerk.
So, it still needs to be filed with the select board?
Select board or the town clerk?
Select board.
I'll, I'll do it in the morning, it hasn't been done yet. I can do it now, I'm like, no, I can't do it.
And they need to vote an approval for you, so I think we'll.
Are you sure that's not the different one?
So, I think for voting purposes, maybe we'll have this be contingent.
Yeah.
Yes, that's fair.
That's what I'm inclined to do. The select board needs to approve it. It sounds like it's an arm and leg transaction, and probably not a conflict, but absent the select board approving it, I'm just going to ask that you not vote until such time, which.
Okay.
I don't think we're going to have a vote this evening, so.
Okay.
Any other disclosures or administrative handling to be handled? And we did have a comment from the audience, Council, if you just raise your voice a little bit, lady in the back couldn't hear you. For the applicant.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Bob Amment, I'm a Falmouth attorney. In fact, my office is next door to Town Hall Square, and therefore very close to the site of the proposed restaurant, that's the subject of tonight's hearing. If the blinds are open, we could look and we could see the site. And I have put on the screen a map, or rather, an aerial photograph of downtown, and you, of course, are all familiar with this, here we are in Town Hall Square, and this is Town Hall Square. And this is the building, 153 through 159 Main Street, that is proposed for a new restaurant. There actually was a restaurant and a bar there until about 1972, when the property was sold to Sam Vincent, who operated Vincent Associates Real Estate Office for many, many years, and the property was sold to Bogosian Development a couple of years ago. I made this aerial view available to you, also to show the extent of parking that's available downtown, and I'll come back to that, and we'll take another look at this picture later. This is a special permit asking for approval of the restaurant without meeting the parking requirements. The restaurant itself is a allowed use. It's a Class 1 restaurant, a quality sit-down restaurant, which is a by-right use in the Business 1 zoning district. However, even by-right uses need to have parking, unless there's an exception, or unless the zoning board of appeals grants a waiver or a reduction of, of parking for suitable reasons. But again, let me just describe the restaurant briefly, and then focus on the permitting issues, and the, and more specifically, the parking issue. Here's a picture of what we hope the restaurant's going to look like, this is what it's planned to look like. The top of the screen is a rendering prepared by Poriuchi and Celine from Town Hall Square. And it shows the restaurant, and actually, the building has hardly changed at all from what's there. This is a new door, this is a reconstructed entrance to the, to the building, but otherwise, the building itself has been renovated in accordance with historical commission decisions recently issued. And the proposal, well, I'll show you in a moment photographs that show that there is an alley or a way that runs from Main Street between the building and Town Hall Square that slopes down, so that by the back of the building, that the ground level outside the back of the building is a full floor. back of the building is a full floor below. So from Main Street, on the right side of the structure as we're looking at it, going all the way to the back, the topography slopes down. The proposal then is to construct above that area, which is about fourteen feet wide at Main Street and about twelve feet wide at the back, to construct a wood deck on which there would be outdoor dining opportunities. The present walkway from Town Hall, which goes to this entrance, would be eliminated. His proposal would be to renovate the landscaping, really beautify it. The benches there are pretty old. Landscape is not particularly attractive. So the restaurateur would renovate that with permission from the town. We would need to go to the select board for that. We'd need to get a license. We would need, I'm sure, agree to maintain it. To do all the things that are shown, we're showing a bike rack in this area. And we, to the extent there might be any encroachment, because the property line is a straight line, but it's right along a stone wall, and the stone wall, of course, is not a straight line, so there might be places where the stone wall encroaches a little over the property line and vice versa. We're talking fractions of an inch here. We just want to make sure that this deck fills that area so there aren't gaps. So we've got some work to do with the select board before we could actually proceed. So we would be going to them for a license. So we think it will be an extremely attractive facility and an improvement to the entrance to town and a suitable location for a restaurant, given the zoning and what's nearby. This is a drawing of the plot with the existing building and the proposed deck in this area. A handicap ramp, which would lead up from Main Street, which would be an improvement because presently there are steps required to get into this commercial space with the ramp. That won't be, won't be necessary. The proposal is for a total of one hundred and thirty seats. And I believe this is the architect's drawing, showing the interior seating, and it shows seventy-four seats inside and a proposed fifty-six seats on the deck for that total of one hundred and thirty seats. So that's the project. What are the permits that are required and why? As I said, a restaurant is a byright use. Also notable, in the Business One district, there are no setbacks required. And so presently, the building extends right to the sidewalk, and the proposal is to have the deck extend right to the stone wall that is the town's line. So again, there are no setbacks required. We don't need any special permit for that. Lot coverage. There is a lot coverage requirement, of course, in the Business One district. Ninety percent of the lot can be covered by impervious surfaces, structure or pavement. And seventy percent can be covered by structure. Presently, the structure cover is fifty-eight point three percent, as stated on the plans that we, that we filed. So we have a conforming building at the present time. By putting the deck as proposed, the lot coverage would be seventy-three point eight percent. That's above seventy percent, which is the figure allowed by right. When I filed the application, I thought there was a particular exception that would apply that would allow us by right to have that seventy-three point eight percent, but that was an error. And so we then filed a special permit application with the planning board under section two forty sixty-nine D, which allows the planning board to permit lot coverage to be above the seventy percent under certain circumstances relating to soil loss, stormwater runoff, the number of trips per day measured, as a multiple of frontage and so on. In any case, that's a planning board special permit that would allow the increase from seventy percent to seventy-three point eight percent. We think that we meet all of the requirements for the grant of that special permit, which is scheduled to be heard, or will be scheduled to be heard on December thirteenth. But then there's the parking. But I want, I want to talk to you about that, of course. Key to the discussion is this section of the zoning bylaw, section two forty one oh four A. And our zoning bylaw says, finding that Business One districts on Main Street are unique, having a large amount of public parking spaces available, and further finding that in order to enhance the economic vitality of downtown Main Streets, some expansion of retail activity balanced with residential development is desired and possible, parking requirements shall be waived for the following. It says, all lots in which the ground floor of existing or proposed structures are devoted solely to uses specified in two forty forty-eight A, C, and D, which includes a Class One restaurant, and in which the existing or proposed structure does not exceed sixty percent coverage of the lot, and doesn't exceed floor space to lot area FAR of more than that same sixty percent. So if we put a restaurant in the existing building, which covers fifty-eight point three percent of the lot, there would be no parking requirement because we're not using the lower level at all. That doesn't count as a gross leasable area. It's storage for the restaurant, therefore it doesn't count towards the parking. We wouldn't be expanding the building, and we wouldn't need any kind, any special permit from the planning board or the Board of Appeals, because we wouldn't need parking, and so we wouldn't need to come to the Board of Appeals, and we wouldn't be increasing the lot coverage over seventy percent. But we are. But what if the alleyway were, were leveled? What if it weren't sloped? What if it was like the areas around most of the restaurants downtown and was level, and you could put tables there? Then you wouldn't be increasing the lot coverage above sixty percent, and by right, you could have the restaurant with the outdoor seating without having to provide parking downtown, on the site, rather. Or what if we were to put a conference room or a function room in the lower level of the restaurant, of building, and had seats there, like other restaurants downtown do? We wouldn't be increasing the lot coverage. We could have the same number of seats as we're proposing, and we wouldn't need a special permit to reduce the parking or to increase the lot coverage. What if we put the, put seating on the roof of the restaurant? Almost flat roof, I've gone up and looked. And there's another proposal pending down Main Street for roof deck dining. We wouldn't be increasing the lot coverage, and we'd be able to increase the seating above what we're proposing inside without needing a special permit. Now, as I said, seventy-four seats are proposed inside. Eighty-eight would actually be allowed under the state building code for the space. That information and the calculations are on the plan that we submitted, and they've been reviewed by the building commissioner. So, but we're only proposing seventy-four inside. That includes the seats at a bar. If you have a restaurant with a hundred and thirty seats, and you need to meet the parking table requirements, that's one parking space for every two seats. Hundred and thirty seats, sixty-five parking spaces. We don't have room to put any parking spaces on this particular property, which is true of some other restaurants downtown, and all the restaurants downtown only have a small amount of parking available. So if we had sixty-five parking spaces, we'd meet the requirement, but we can have eighty-eight seats inside without any parking. What's the difference? The difference is sixty-five minus forty-four, forty-four spaces for eighty-eight seats. We're talking about twenty-one, twenty-one seats. That's really what's required without your waiver, in order for us to have the outdoor deck, which we wouldn't need if it wasn't, if it was already level. I suppose you could actually build it up and make it level with a retaining wall. But we want to have an attractive deck and hope that the historical commission agrees that it's attractive, and we're going before the historical commission next Monday, Tuesday, Isn't that a particularly large restaurant with seventy-four seats inside and fifty-six on the deck? Estia down the street, to the, slightly to the west. The select, the board's office, that is, the town manager's office, told us that they have seating for two hundred and sixty-two approved under their liquor license. Cucina Solmari has a hundred and twenty-eight seats, and that doesn't count allowed twenty-five seats that are in the tent behind the restaurant. The pickle jar right across the street from our site has seventy-nine, but that doesn't count its rear outdoor seating. The corridor deck has a hundred and fifteen seats, and that doesn't count its tent in the rear with, with more seats. There are thirteen real restaurants, that doesn't count the French Bakery, it doesn't count the candy shops and so on, within a thousand feet of this site. They all share the parking. That's downtown. And there are approximately four hundred and fifty public parking spaces that are within six hundred feet of this restaurant site, including, of course, those that are right outside in Town Hall Square. The owner and the tenant of one fifty-nine Main Street have as much right to use all of that public parking as do all of the others downtown. There will be some site improvement, although there's not a lot of site left to improve after the deck is installed. But acting upon the suggestion of the town engineer, we're going to remove the pavement that would be under the deck and put a pervious surface under it. There won't be any increase in, in runoff because water is simply going to go through the deck to the ground below. But it will be an improvement to have gravel under that pervious surface instead of the hard surface. Grass is starting to grow over that pavement because it hasn't been repaved probably in many, many, many years. Some concerns were raised by the engineering department. One of them was whether the deck would encroach onto Main Street. So we submitted revised plans that pulled the deck back six inches from Main Street to make sure that it didn't touch the town right-of-way. And I've already mentioned that we will go to the selectmen for a license to deal with butting up against the, the stone wall. The Board of Appeals has approved similar special permit requests in the past. I mentioned Estia for one in two thousand seventeen, not that many years ago. Estia was approved. The decision in special permit number sixty-three seventeen includes language that's quite relevant. It includes language that's actually similar to what is in the, in the bylaw. The board found that there's public parking downtown to accommodate parking for the restaurant. Remember, that was a much bigger restaurant.
Sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Ammet. How many more minutes do you think you're going to need for your presentation?
Oh, give me five more minutes.
Is the board okay with a five-minute extension? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm going to simply give you a copy for your file of that decision. It makes findings similar to what I'd hope you would do, that there's adequate parking downtown, even for that, that bigger restaurant. We filed with the board, with our application, a letter from the Chamber of Commerce that was submitted to the selectmen, which has granted a variance to allow the proposed restaurant to be connected to the town sewer. And in that letter, the chamber said it supports all, the granting of all the necessary permits, and says that the location and design, particularly the proposed outdoor dining deck, will be a very attractive addition in the town's business center. They also go on in this letter in the last paragraph to discuss that they don't think that the restaurant will, requires more parking or will create a traffic problem. The traffic is here for the couple of months of the year that we're, we're busiest, and one additional restaurant is probably not going to change that calculus very much. There may be some people who come to downtown to come to this restaurant, but it won't be the majority. They also suggest that the restaurant may actually enhance turnover of spaces. Right now, there are a lot of, a lot of waiting going on with people desiring to dine in the summer, particularly design to dine outside. And the other restaurant may actually speed up the efficiency in which people can be served dinner in Falmouth. It's also been pointed out to me that restaurants do turnover. People come, they're there for a couple hours, and they leave, and their parking space can become available. And that's contrasted with other types of businesses, particularly during the day. Office workers, if they come in the morning, park on the town space, they may be there all day long. So to some extent, that may be an improvement. I haven't talked at all about an important issue, and that is that we have a way here, and it is shown on the plans. Trying to get that for you. You can see in the location of the deck is, we've labeled it way, and although I didn't include it, the land court shows it as, as a way. And we're going to block it with a deck. Well, we have... Well, we have permission from all those with rights to use the deck to do that, and we filed copies of those with, with the board. The only parties with rights in the record are the owners of, of this land court lot, Lot Three, that's the coin shop, and the owner of one-forty-nine Main Street. And we've provided that information. I also have a title insurance company's title abstract that confirms that there are no other rights to this right-of-way. And we, we ourselves have studied this, and I have the abstract, which I'd be happy to share. I have brought copies of that, and if the hearing were not going to be continued tonight, I'd want to put it in the file. But I've been told that the questions about the easements, who has rights in it, may be reviewed by town council. So I think what I should do is send all of this stuff to town council with a copy to the, the board, or I can send it to the board to be, to forward. It's pretty unusual for the town council to be asked to essentially do a title examination. I'm not, I think we, we can and will help out quite a bit on that. I know that there's a letter that was submitted to the board from Diane Salter. She used to own the property question at Vincent Associates, and it just discusses the fact that access to the rear of the buildings has been from the west, and she's familiar with it for the last forty-two years she was, had her office in the building. I'm sure there'll be more to talk about, about those issues. Probably use my time. I'm happy to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Ahmed. Questions to the board? I'll start with you, Jerry.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
Just in case, I mean, out of the abundance of caution, if, in fact, Jerry has not granted his request, and were to go to litigation, if he were to ask questions tonight, could it not affect in some fashion?
That's an excellent point. Do, I'm going to ask you just to restrain, hold off any questions till the continuance or determination by the board's selectmen.
That's fair. My, my question was to ask clarification of Blue Moon is a lease saw? And I thought you said has no.
No, a tenant, a less C.
A less, I mean, a less C, I'm sorry. And is not necessarily Makogoshian or Longfellow design.
You're not supposed to answer any questions.
Well, this.
If you want to speak, wait for the chair to recognize you. Jerry, my question is, you could.
Well, I can't speak to him outside.
I understand that. Your disclosures about your relationship and so on have been made. You can, I would suggest taking it up with the board's selectmen or the town council. And then town council, in their capacity is to investigate and advise the board's selectmen if a conflict or not exists.
Okay.
Can certainly ask you or get clarification.
All right. I can listen to the tape also.
Thank you. We'll start at this end with questions then. Mark.
As I said, I, I wasn't able to read the submission. It was presented later than the seven days, and we went over this last week, so I'm not willing to ask questions or vote on anything this evening.
Very well. Suzanne, questions at this time?
I have a question because it may come up at the next meeting. Are you considering doing the, the parking turnover study that Jed asked for?
I guess I would say we're thinking about it, so to that extent, we're considering the possibility of it, but I think it's extremely unlikely. The, I think, first of all, I don't believe it's ever been requested. I think the language in the bylaw suggests, that I've put on the board for you, suggests that this is a town policy. Now, I think a study outside the summer wouldn't do any good anyway. I also think that it's up to the Board of Appeals if we need a special permit, and you can do this without a study which, what's it going to tell us? It tells us the turnover is so many per day, per hour. I'd like to show you just that, go back to that plan that shows what's downtown. You know, there's more parking today than there used to be, in the sense that the town has made arrangements with Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank for over thirty spaces in this area. We have behind Town Hall about forty spaces, which are not available to the public, even though there's very little use of them. There are, when I came in tonight, thirty-six spaces behind Town Hall Square that could be used. They're not needed this time of year, but that should be worked out. The restaurant will arrange so that its staff don't park downtown. They've already made an arrangement with the owner of lots on Scranton Avenue, Vince Joffrey. We gave you his, his letter, that they'd be able to carpool from there. They're, of course, aware of a, the town lot with more than one hundred spaces off of Depot Avenue along the bike path, easily, easy walking distance, or certainly to shuttle people from it. Take into account what the chamber has said. The turnover of businesses is important for the vitality of, of the town. And take into account that by right, we could have the number of seats we're talking about, except for topography, or if we wanted to put the seats inside. So we don't, we don't think it's fair to ask us for that study. We think it'd be extremely expensive, and we'd, we'd get some information that I just, you know, may help you feel better about making a decision, but I don't think it's, it's reasonable to ask, and it hasn't been asked in the past.
Thank you.
Scott.
So it sounds like Attorney Ahmed, that you would be okay with potentially, if this was approved, to condition the approval, that the employees would not be parking in the Town Hall Square area. Is that, am I overstating that?
No, you're not overstating that. The only exception would be if there was private, any private spaces that might be available, not, but no public spaces.
Looking at the application in the file, the assessors stated that the building in the rear has the right-of-way that appears to block the deck.
Can you just say that once again?
The building in the rear has a right-of-way that appears to block the deck. That was the assessor's comment.
The, as I said, there are only two properties that have rights in that way. One is one-forty-nine Main Street, and one is Lot Three. So if that's the building in the rear that you're referring to, that would be right, and those are the two properties, the owners of which have consented in writing, registered or recorded at the registry deeds to having the deck there.
I mean, it would be critical as we move forward to make sure that that's tightened up as much as possible. How about as far as fire health and safety? Fire department didn't think that they would ever need access to utilize that right-of-way.
If you take a look at that way, which as I've said is eleven-point-nine feet wide at the end, there is, emergency access vehicles are not going to go down there. We don't think they can get down there and make that turn.
I, I don't think they could get down there and make the turn. I'm just, they might.
To make, to fight.
Put their back down there to fight a fire.
To fight a fire, they'd be able to do that from Town Hall Square with the vehicles there, just as they would today.
Okay. So those are some of my concerns as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to reserve any questions I have till probably the next hearing. Public comment?
My name is Mary Downey, and I represent the unit owners of a condominium who are in the rear of this proposed restaurant and bar. I would start, well, let's see if I can get something up here. I had put it on here. And just give you some of my jewels first. Okay. It's that one you can see. This is the rear of Main Street. These ways along Main Street have been there for over a hundred years. Where somewhere nineteen-twenty-six, I have some land court-registered plans, and they have acted, they have been contiguous, two Ls that meet here, right where you're seeing this pathway. And the, the property with the stairway is the back of what would be Blue Moon. There actually is plenty of access for, I, I've driven my car through there, plenty of access for at least an emergency vehicle to get there and get a hose if needed. So safety and fire and rescue isn't a serious matter, especially putting in another, a restaurant. So this one-hundred-and-thirty-seat restaurant proposed would add this to, it would be the second or third largest restaurant in downtown. Almost all of the downtown restaurants have been granted parking variances, and rightfully so, but this project seeks, none of them have had to proceed with no parking spaces whatsoever for any customers or any, any employees. So the key difference with this project is that all of the other downtown restaurants do have some onsite parking. And I have other photographs, but I can also just address it that the, let's see, a restaurant of this size is expected to have roughly twenty-four to forty employees. There's no way to police where they park, and if they're running in for a check or whoever, who knows what, there'll be times when they are behind this restaurant or trying to get behind this restaurant to get in and out of, of Blue Moon. La Savetta has one-hundred-and-eleven seats and sixteen dedicated parking spots onsite to accommodate the employees on a busy night. Estia, one-hundred-and-ninety, it's the first time I heard, over two-hundred. They have twenty-six spots onsite. Bluefin has sixteen spots. So this project has none. Attorney Ahmed showed drawings of the front and the side of the building and discussed the bylaws and how the downtown parking can accommodate all of Blue Moon's customers, but he didn't show you the back of the restaurant. That's why I'm staying on this so that you can see. And this doesn't show when this parking, I have other ones that will show you that. There are dumpsters to be picked up, there are deliveries, trash. None of that is shown in this beautification project for Main Street, because there isn't any, they haven't shown us any plan for how they're going to get deliveries. What they have done is they have presumed on the way that is owned by the La Savetta restaurant, and that is overburdening a way, which we heard in another argument. You can't overburden a way. Well, now you have one way where there had always been two, and they will have to pass over my client's right-of-way and easement in the back to get to their property, to, to service, for linen service, for whatever happens back there. You're certainly going to have employees that will be taking breaks and in the back and all around. You're going to have late-night events. It's, it's really, if you look at the inside of this plan, it's, there's a huge bar. It's a bar right off of Main Street. That's what it will be, and there are big windows that will show the bar. If they wanted to stay contained inside and open up another restaurant, they wouldn't need this parking variance. But to extinguish a way with a deck that is going to completely change the character of this quiet corner of Main Street, sure, it could be improved maybe, but there's nothing wrong with it, just as it is. I would ask that the project should not be permitted, as they have virtually no onsite parking. And restaurant reality is that there will be employees who will likely jam this, and it will be a dead end. So how are these service trucks going to turn around? And, and my clients, who are here also to speak tonight, and they will speak to being hit by various vehicles that are in the back there, there's not a lot of room. I, I will, when I finish, show you a few more photos if I have time. And so I would just say it will create illegally parked cars, a new jam on Main Street. It's a very thin part of Main Street, difficult as it is to get by. It will be worse. The way that is by La Savetta is blocked fifteen times a day by some delivery vehicle or someone who is dropping someone off, and the condo owners are, can't get out. So they use the other way. So whatever use has been in effect for La Savetta, it's also been in use for Vincent, the, what I keep calling it the Vincent side. So please don't grant this variance until the lack of onsite parking is examined and the reasonable question of employee parking is addressed. Thank you. And I, I'd just like to say, I quickly checked with my clients during your disclosure, Mr. Palamas, and they do think that, that it would be easier for you not to have to vote and easier for them not to have to weigh in, and we really appreciate your disclosure. And I also sent a letter on, I hand-delivered a letter on October fourth to the board. Was that delivered to the board?
It is in the file.
It is in the file. Some of the information is a little obsolete. It went from one-twenty-five to one-thirty and a few other things that I have learned since I wrote the letter, but I would hope that that is an official document in this file.
It is, ma'am.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
May I, oh, sorry. May I just show a few more pictures? Oh, my. I don't, oh, I know, I think there's an X up here. Okay. Now, here's, here's some parking looking from La Savetta down into the, the way. That entire way back there is, is blocked, just as you can see, with, with the cars there. Now, each time I have to, I guess I have to go back. Is there an arrow?
Right side of, well, you scroll down now, there's a...
A little arrow.
It's on the right side.
Sorry. Oh, good. Oh, I can go there. Yeah. Okay.
Is that the one?
Yes. Thank you. Okay. So, here we are. Oh, geez. Sorry, it's supposed to have a, a list. This actually looks like it's behind Bluefin, so I just wanted to show, they have parking back there and it's used. This one is downtown by the old Friendly's, TJ Wings or something like that. They have parking. And this one, as you can see, is Estia Parking Lot, plenty of parking back there. And also, restaurants through COVID did the pickups and drop-offs, so are you looking at that with, with this new restaurant? There's no accommodation for that in their plans. This is La Civetta. They have up to 16 parking spots in the back there. Okay. And if, if you can just bear with me to get here. I think I need more help. Sorry. Okay. So, I have another file in here that's called, oh, yeah, Plans.
And I have to ask you, ma'am, to wrap this up so we can get to other butters and other comments.
Yes, thank you. I will also submit now these land court plans that show the ways. And because someone gives you a license to something that you don't have a right to extinguish, makes those licenses irrelevant from my perspective. And in terms of land court, you cannot just extinguish a way with a deck, you must go back to land court, and they are the proper arbiter of this matter. Oh, sorry. Okay, let's see. Well, I'll just, this is the condominium behind Blue Moon. And, and when they, let's see if I can find, that's another spot. You can see that there are drainage problems, and we've also learned that it's partly, Blue Moon's building is partly in a flood zone, so that's a consideration. Again, these are more parked cars back here, dumpsters. And here it is when their cars face, they're facing each other. There's no room to get through there at all. And there it is again. I think, and I'll save the land court plans for another...
Thank you, council.
...submission. Thank you very much.
Other public comment?
For the record, my name is Richie Metha. I'm the owner of 137 Main Street with Linda Samortis. I'm a business owner on Main Street. I have looked across the street at 159 for 28 years now. As a business owner, I do welcome business to our town. I do welcome them. I've spoken in behalf of them on other projects. But as a landowner, this project would strip a right-of-way that's been in continual use for 100 years. The fear is that the lack of parking would lead to an increased burden on our property. So, basically, what you're looking at right here, this white car is in front of our garage. This is the other property. So, by them blocking off the, the way that has been in continual use, it's gonna basically burden the back of our property. It will create extra congestion on this, as you see, very limited way with deliveries and drop-offs. It will increase nuisance of people encroaching on our land and with our very limited parking spaces while somebody's just dropping something off. Because of the lack of parking, our driveway gets blocked between five and 15 times daily. And that can be anywhere from five to 20 minutes. That's, you know, blocks people from going to work, doctor's appointments, and all other aspects of our life. We feel without adequate parking, it would be a burden to our land and our property. We feel it would significantly hinder our enjoyment of our property and would lead to a great loss of value of the property that we just purchased nine months ago. I am torn because I do welcome business into town, but I do see the lack of parking creating a serious infringement on, on our property. We do have right-of-way to the interest and to the, the way that they're, they're wanting to extinguish. So, I just wanted to make my, my point across. So, thank you very much. Again, Richie Metha, 137 Main Street. I abut their property.
Other comments?
My name is Linda Samortis. I concur with everything she said and everything he said. I have lived at 137 Main directly behind La Civetta and the building that houses Bean &amp; Co. and a real estate office and Eugene Henry's Emporium, formerly John's Shoe Store. I've lived there for 11 years, 10 as a renter and one as a co-owner with Richie Metha. I am 20 feet or so behind what is now the nefarious and noisy Timber Axe Bar. Little side note, I constantly call police about the music that is blaring Fridays and Saturdays till 1:00 a.m. I am also two stones' throw behind the proposed Blue Moon at 159 Main. So, now you've seen all the photographs, and please take a walk down when you have the time to actually see it in person, much better to see it in person. It can be quite a congested area, loading up supplies, cavosa, rubbish removal. They did hit, I've been hit twice by Carl's Company. The first time, the driver was kind enough to leave a note, so that wasn't on me. We went, the second time, there was no note, although just traces of red paint. I know it was them, it's just the way it is. Amazon is there, so much more of Amazon since COVID, UPS, et cetera. I can't imagine how bad it would be with all that might go on, including the construction crews, which previously have had a lack of respect. So many conditions to be considered going forward with a project such as this without negatively affecting the neighbors. Neighbors such as us at 137 that actually reside there, you know? It's day and night, we reside there. Think of sleep and how important it is. You know, just a thought, I've worked on Main Street, that part of Main Street, for 40 years, previously even owning a building back in the 80s, a, a business back in the 80s. And how about our farmer's market that was such a lovely addition to Main Street on the library green that was moved to Marine Park, one of the reasons being parking and so many complaints, can't park, can't park. You know, you've heard it all, I don't want to be redundant. This is the third time I've ever spoken at any kind of meeting like this. Not as nervous tonight as I was Tuesday. Very nervous the first one for the select board. So, I just want to thank you for listening to me and considering what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other comments? So, I think we're definitely heading towards a continuation.
Yep.
What date are we looking towards?
So, given that they're continued with the planning board till December 13th, so we would need to be post that date, we're proposing January 5th, given our current calendar.
Scott, is that a date that's agreeable to you or good for you?
We wouldn't be happy about that date. Is there not a date in December that we can meet? It's an extremely long continuance.
So, we do have a hearing on the 1st of the summer, but it's totally filled. We don't have any space. And then after that would be December 8. So, it could be, I guess, December 8, except, yeah, well, except that that's before the planning board.
Is December 8 the last hearing in December?
That's as far as we've scheduled, until January 7.
Well, you won't be able to take a vote on the 8th, but I think that it's important for us to see you six weeks from now instead of 12 or 11, whatever it is.
Fair enough.
We're still gonna have a continuance, but we won't have a planning board until the planning board's meeting on December 13th.
Well, as always, applicant can continue to maybe work with the butters and neighbors to address concerns, and I don't think we'll be able to conclude the hearing on the 8th, given that the planning board has not finished the hearing, but...
But the hope is that we'd be able to report to you on the 8th, maybe some progress with regard to these issues.
That's reasonable. Is that a motion?
Motion. I heard you.
Give it to Scott.
Motion for the December 8?
Second to Suzanne. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, that's a vote.
For the record, I abstained.
Record will affect Mr. Thomas's abstain.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, the board need a break. We'll take a five-minute break to attend to personal needs. The next sound of the gavel.
Thank you all. Next up is hearing 077-22 Adams, 36 Beach Rose Lane, North Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct in addition to the non-conforming dwelling, increasing lot coverage by structures.
Do you want me to read, you just read it right in? So moved. The application, 077-22 Sarah M. Adams, 36 Beach Rose Lane, North Falmouth, applied to the planning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3C and 240-69E of Dakota Falmouth to construct in addition to a non-conforming dwelling, increasing lot coverages by structures on the subject property known as 36 Beach Rose Lane, North Falmouth. And I think I have no comments, if I'm correct. Yeah, no comments.
For the applicant.
Is that right?
I think there was an engineering comment, but I think it was pretty typical.
I have all those.
I have a note on my sheets, there was a comment from water department.
Flip, flip. Wait, they were kidding me. Okay, so Marine has no comments. Engineering, oh, engineering does. Sorry. Application was reviewed for impacts to the right-of-ways and public utilities, Beach Rose Lane and Alden Drive are private, private right-of-ways. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. The project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of butters or public right-of-ways. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain guard, and other stormwater infiltration measure for the new roof area at a minimum. And it isn't clear, it isn't clear if the portion of the shed that is not within the parcel, parcel is included in the lot coverage. We defer to the board if this has implication for their review and approval. Nothing from ConCom. Health, it appears that the plan is to remove privacy from the upstairs middle bedroom to remove, to remove it from being considered a bedroom. That will give the applicant the ability to have the first-floor master bedrooms and a total number of bedrooms will remain at four. Septica suitable for four. Planning had none. Water. The existing home has town water from a one-inch service fed from a two-inch main. Service appears to be where the, where the addition is proposed, so it may have to be relocated so it's not underneath the building. The water meter will also have to be installed inside the home if not already. Assessors are all set. Sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Thank you.
For the applicant.
Thank you. For the record, Kevin Clower. I am here tonight representing the applicants, Bill and Sarah Adams, the owners of 36 Beach Rose Lane. They're both here with us this evening. They're seeking to alter the existing non-conforming dwelling in order to create a single-floor addition, which would allow for a first-floor master. This property is 36 Beach Rose Lane. Last week, I joked about having to look up a property in Nye's Neck, and this one's right around the corner from this property, and I had to look up this property too. The lesson there, I think, is I need to spend more time in Nye's Neck. But this is on the corner of Alden Drive and Beach Rose Lane in the Nye's Neck neighborhood, which has a variety of, of lot sizes. This is pretty typical and representative of, of the lots in the area. It is just shy of 16,000 square feet. It's in a residential C zoning district, and it is not located in the flood zone. Presently, there is a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling with a shed, footprints just over 3,200 square feet. It is non-conforming, the shed encroaches into the private right-of-way, and the lot coverage by structure is currently 20.4%, where 20% is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. The existing ridge height on this house is about 34 feet. We submitted the revised plan to show the shed being relocated entirely onto the lot as part of this proposal. That doesn't change the lot coverage calculations because it's a fairly minimal change. But what the applicants are proposing, as I mentioned, is a single, a single-story addition, which will be adjacent to the garage area in order to create a first-floor master and to allow for first-floor living moving forward. Included in this proposal is the relocation of the shed. It doesn't create any new non-conformities, and though the lot coverage by structure is increased, it would be considered eliminated as a non-conformity with the issuance of a special permit under 24069E. It does not create any new dimensional non-conformities. The, the proposed ridge for the addition area is 23 feet one inch. Due to the existing non-conformities, though, this does require a special permit under 243C and 24069E. Under 243C, the pre-existing non-conforming structures may be changed by special permit if there's a finding by the board that the proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. In order to determine that, the board is asked to consider the standards of 240216 and whether or not that alteration creates any new dimensional non-conformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, as I noted, there is no new non-conformity created. The existing non-conformities either are eliminated with the shed being relocated in the issuance of a special permit for the lot coverage, and there's no change to the views and vistas, and the house does conform to the neighborhood. There is a special permit being requested under 24069E as well, which allows for lot coverage above 20%. And in that condition, the board is asked to consider the size and height of the structure relative to the average size and height of structures in the neighborhood, the effect of shadow, the impact on views and vistas from public ways, and the effect of nitrogen on coastal embamments. Here, there are no impacts on the views and vistas from public ways because these are private ways. There should be no impact to shadow, these are larger lots, and the proposed addition ridge is lower than the existing ridge by a pretty sizable margin. And there's no impact on nitrogen for the coastal embamments because we're keeping the same number of bedrooms by eliminating a second-floor bedroom to keep it at four. As to the size and height, Nye's Neck is a very varied neighborhood, containing both very modest homes and some very large homes as well. This dwelling, I think, remains a balance of the two. The proposal results in a home that fits in with the neighborhood and achieves the Adams' goals and needs in this situation. We did submit that lot comparison worksheet, looking at 28 nearby properties. The analysis shows the dwelling as proposed is firmly within the range of those homes. This project as proposed represents an improvement for the owners. It is by no means substantially more detrimental than what exists. The existing non-conformities are eliminated. There's no new dimensional non-conformities. There's no adverse effects, and certainly none which would overbalance the benefits of outlined. I believe that this meets all the requirements of 243C, 240-69E, and 240-216. For these reasons, I would ask that this board grant the special permit request, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Questions from the board, start with Mark.
Can I?
Certainly.
Pass it on for a second, please.
I'll start. There's two sheds, right?
No. No, so what you're seeing here, this one that's hashed out is the, that's where the shed is, and this is where it's going.
Oh, okay. I thought they were both, because it doesn't really, okay.
Yeah, I think the notation there is existing shed to be relocated.
Okay. And the other one's, okay. And then I searched on this plan for the height, and I couldn't find it, but you just said 34.
I had to, I had to scale it out. It's not on the plans, and that's, I didn't catch it.
Was it me? I took a long time. I didn't magnify it.
I scaled it out.
Okay, thank you. But it's 34. Thanks.
And the proposed is substantially lower than what exists.
Thank you.
This is confirmed for the third time. Converting the old, the office will not be converted to a bedroom. So, there's only four.
Yes, so what's happening there is they're removing that doorway. They're putting in a cased opening, so that we avoid that being potentially considered a bedroom.
All right, and just for fun, in the future, where you two are...
I don't know where this is going, and I'm scared.
Your lot comparison? Are you fine with averaging and just adding the average to your computation?
So, I've done that, I've done that here and there in the past, but I think it's not always indicative of what it's being asked for, because, you know, you were asked to compare the, to consider the size and height of the structure in relation to the size and height of structure in the neighborhood. So, you know, we certainly can add that, but I think it can be very misleading at times, because you have some real big outliers in either direction.
You do have outliers, both on the lower end and one on the upper end. That's true.
So...
I'll let you run with that for now.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I didn't know where that was going, and I just...
Jerry.
No questions. Mark?
What's the, the shed is 10 by 10, correct?
Yeah, it's a 100-square-foot shed.
So, why wasn't that in the lot coverage calculation? And what would it bring it to if it was considered as it should be?
So, the revised plan that we did submit, which is the one that's up on the screen, basically, when they ran the initial numbers, they only counted the portion of the shed that was in the lot towards the lot coverage. They have added it. It's in the calculations that are on the screen before you and that were submitted to the board some time ago. It doesn't change the lot coverage percentages, because it's a relatively minor addition. So, you know, it's maybe 20 to 30 feet. So, we're still with the same percentages.
Well, roughly. It is slightly larger, I mean...
Yes, it is, it is slightly higher, but it doesn't, it doesn't change the overall percentage.
It's not a zero-sum game. Sorry, I can't think of the name of the term, and hopefully it'll, it'll come to me. But on this lot, you have a radius. Now, there is a sign in the front yard with two stakes on it, and that is the lot corner to the radius. And I paced that off the downspout as it is, and it was, you know, pretty close to the 28.2. But there is no stake on the corner. Now, when you have a radius like that, shouldn't there be five corners?
I honestly, I don't know what you're talking about with the radius.
Really? Drive up where Beach Rose Lane meets Alden.
Of the property line?
Yeah, the property line has a radius.
Oh, I mean, we don't typically stake the entire property line. It's the area of the improvement is what's staked out.
You don't, well, you have the one, the one corner right at the radius staked out with the sign, and it says lot corner. And I was able to pace it off with the, with the calculation you had here, just to see. And my question was, how come the shed isn't moved 10 feet off the property line?
Because a shed of 100 square feet only needs to be three feet off the property line.
Okay. But again, would it, if you, with the radius, if you put the stake at the corner of the radius on Beach Rose Lane, why would you not do the same thing on Alden Drive? Just for future references, because it's going to...
I didn't, I didn't stake it myself, so I can't necessarily answer that question. I, I can ask the engineer moving forward.
Yeah, but I mean, all the lot corners are supposed to be staked out, technically. And it did, like I said, I was able to figure out it wasn't an issue. But my question was the location of the shed.
Okay.
Which obviously was on the, but I know you said typically that you don't like to do the calculations of, but in E, it specifically says, "In issuing the special permit, the Board of Appeals shall take into consideration the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of the structures in the neighborhood." So, I don't think that that should be dismissed.
So, I provided a...
You haven't done the calculations of the average.
I provided an incredibly detailed lot coverage calculation sheet. I spent...
But it doesn't include what it specifies here in E. It doesn't have the average size and height of the structures of the neighborhood. It just has lot coverage, and it doesn't even give us the average lot coverage in the area you, I mean, just as far as details are concerned, these are the raw things that we're supposed to take into consideration when we make our decision.
So...
And then here's a term, I'm sorry, when you do, it escapes me at the moment where you throw out the high and the low.
Median?
No, no, it's...
Weighted, weighted average? I'm not sure.
No, it's, it's not that either, but it's where you throw out the low and the high.
I was told to be, I went, I went to law school, because math isn't my strong suit.
That was the comment I was going to make, but I didn't want to embarrass any lawyers in the world.
But I mean, honestly...
I would have been a doctor if I was good at math.
I mean, we're supposed to take into consideration, as it says here, "In issuing the special permit, the Board of Appeals shall take into consideration the size and height of the structure in relation to the average size and height of the structures in the neighborhood."
Okay.
And it's not our job to do that. It would be yours.
I think, I provided the information, I provided an incredibly detailed lot comparison worksheet. I spent, I spent a second, never again tomorrow.
Excuse me, where are the averages?
I didn't calculate the average, Mr. Finneran.
That's what I asked for.
So, I, but I have provided a lot, lot coverage worksheet the same way we've provided lot coverage worksheets for any application for 240-69E. If that's something the board wants moving forward, I can accommodate that moving forward. I can't change the fact I haven't done it on this one as of yet.
That would be my suggestion, if that's what the board is, the direction the board is now going in. I think what is normally accomplished in terms of ridge height and so on is done usually with a, when we do site visits, people are usually driving around the neighborhoods. And that we just, the board has generally taken notice of the height of existing buildings in the neighborhood.
Yeah, well, it's size and height, and, God. Actually, the term is standard deviation, where when you're doing an average, you throw out the high and the low. Sometimes you go to the second level of standard, and you throw out both highs and both lows. But you haven't provided us with any of that, as it specifies in E.
I've provided the same information I provided for every application I've done since Ms. Stockman has been here. It is, that is the information the board has always looked for. That's the information I provided. I think I provided you with an incredibly detailed lot coverage worksheet. I spend more time than I care to think about working on those things, because the information is not readily available. So, if that's something the board wants moving forward, I can certainly accommodate that. I haven't done it for this one, but duly noted.
Do you believe the ridge height, is it not in keeping with the neighborhood?
No, I, ridge height, the sides and structure, there's some very small buildings there. There's some lots that have 7, 9, and 11% lot coverage while we're going, I mean... First of all, there's no precedent set here. I'm going to make my decisions what the bylaw, in the method that the bylaw tells me. And it seems to me that it's, again, I'll read it one more time. Under E, "In issuing the special permit, the Board of Appeals shall," and in Massachusetts law, shall is must and will, "take into consideration the size and size of the structure in relation to the average size and height of the structures in the neighborhood." Then, we have no averages here, so they haven't been provided. I can certainly say that I'm going to ask this every time that 69E applies. I mean, and this bleeds back into, you know, 240C, 1B, and, I mean, it's... This is, these are the instructions we have to make our decisions. And we're lacking...
I'm not disagreeing, the bylaw is what the bylaw is, but certainly you're prerogative to ask for that as a board member.
Well, I mean, it's, I don't have the prerogative to make a decision outside of the bylaws. That's how I interpret it, and that's how I'm going to do my job, as long as I'm here. And I mean, maybe it's not such a big consideration here as it can be in other places, but for us to turn a blind eye to it, I find that less than thorough, if not lazy.
I don't like to be considered lazy. I think you made a very good point. It says consider, and you could look at the other numbers. You throw the average in, the average could be meaningless.
Well, if it was meaningless, they wouldn't put it in the bylaw.
It says consider. I don't want to debate it with you. I just don't think we're lazy. I think we're going to get it in the future. You know, it's, it's our right to vote on the information you have.
Are there other questions?
No, other than that, I honestly don't accept for, without that information, I don't think we've considered it, as it says in the bylaw. I don't think that we're being thorough enough. And, I mean, we have other issues here. I don't, I don't care to bring them in, but, I mean, we discussed them last week after the meeting, like...
We discussed them during public, or, excuse me, during...
Yeah.
Not after the meeting, but...
Yeah, thank you.
But I mean, you know, it's another day.
Future agenda items.
And such. And I, you know, I mean, it's just, it's not complete, and it shouldn't be considered, because that's what the bylaw tells us.
Are there any other questions you have for the applicant?
How do you think that this deviates from the average size and height in the neighborhood?
I think that what we're proposing is well below the existing ridge height. I think the house is on the larger side for the neighborhood, but I think it's certainly within the scope of the surrounding properties.
The one that's 7% lot coverage?
Some of those lots are two to three acres.
I understand, but...
So, I mean, again, that's why these numbers aren't...
But they wouldn't be...
Some of the lots on Westwood Road especially are very large in size.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I just, that's why I think the average isn't always indicative of much. That said, I hear you that you'd like it moving forward. I think this is certainly within the scope of the neighborhood. I think that this is a highly approvable project. I think the ridge height is lower than the existing ridge height, so in the board's consideration of the size and height of the structures, of shadow, of views and vistas from public ways, and effect of nitrogen on coastal abeyment, and generally speaking, whether or not what's being proposed is substantially more detrimental, I think that it is in no, by no means substantially more detrimental, and that this board can and should approve this.
And you may well be correct, but you don't have the data to prove it, and you don't have the data that they asked for.
Suzanne, any other question?
I just want to state that I drove around up there for quite a while, looked at all the houses. I felt it fit in. I felt I did my due diligence. I don't feel I'm being lazy. I did not have the exact data, but I did a visual, and I feel it's going to be fine then. That's my opinion.
Follow-up here?
No.
Public comment? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close.
Do we need a continuation?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
I'll abstain.
Four in favor, one abstention. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Go ahead. I'll second it.
Okay, second to Jerry. Findings?
Not more detrimental to the neighborhood.
Findings?
No, go ahead. I don't want to take your job. I might be fired at the next election meeting.
It's in an RB district. It's in a no-flood zone. Lot size is 15, 959. It's a private road. The new lot coverage is going to be 28.8%.
That's by structures paving and parking.
With parking and structures, sorry, yes. And lock, I think that's about all I have. The height is 34. And I think that's all I have.
Existing structure is 32, 52. Proposed is 39, 71. Lot coverage is going from 20.4% to 24.9%.
Yep. And the paving's 27.3 to 28.8, right?
Yep. Testimony's four bedrooms, staying at four bedrooms. Advocacy seeks a single-story addition. There are no new non-conformities. Not more detrimental. Finer would suggest is keeping with the neighborhood. Shed is being relocated from a corner of the lot to a more central, westerly part of the portion of the lot. Anything else for findings?
It's within three feet, oh, as planned.
Yeah, coming in as planned.
It'll cover a lot of things.
No oppositions in the file, correct? No oppositions at the hearing. Conditions?
Per plans.
Normal working hours?
Standard work hours. Be cased openings at the, what's been described as the office. Make sure that we're otherwise in compliance with the health to keep the bedroom counted four.
Water line and water meter?
Yep, absolutely.
Case certification for lot coverage?
Yeah, since we're going to 24.9 and the condition that there can't be essentially anything else that could tip it beyond 25%.
No new sheds? No new storage bins? No new buildings of any description?
Well, it's no changes to...
Per plan.
Stormwater.
Stormwater, yep.
Yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstentions?
Just a point of order. We didn't have a discussion, and we're going into the, just like I said.
Would the board like to have a discussion?
Not that I had anything to say, because I've said what I have to say.
Happy to have a discussion, I mean, normally consensus.
Normally, don't we have a discussion before we vote?
It depends on the project. I'm happy to incorporate discussion, if you'd like that going forward.
No, no, I'm just pointing that there was no discussion, and we went right to the...
Sometimes we have a discussion whether we want to continue it or not, and things like that. There's a variety of reasons whether we'll ask for discussion or not.
If board members want discussion, please indicate. So, before we take a vote, I'll be happy to incorporate it. I don't want, I don't want to stifle the discussion if you want to have a discussion.
No, no, I just want to cover, touch all our bases.
That's a vote.
Thank you very much. What was the, Mr. Finneran, did you abstain? I just want to know for the record, because I have an abstention and a vote as well.
I don't think that I was provided with what's asked for in 69E, and I certainly will be asking for it, the average.
Understood, I just asked if you abstained on the final vote. That was, okay.
So, hence I abstain.
Okay, okay. I just wasn't sure.
I don't think that we met 69E, so I'm not going to put my name on it. And like I said, I'm going to go by the, by the, by the...
Just ask the record to reflect the vote was four in favor with Mr. Finneran abstaining. Make it clear for the record.
Thank you.
Next up, we have 078-22 Brown Garofalo. I hope I got that right. If I didn't, I apologize. 94 Seafit Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise the existing dwelling and rebuild with attached garage and pool, exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
It's an application 078-22 Allison Brown and Eugene Garofalo. It's an application 078-22, Allison Brown and Eugene Garofalo, if I say it correctly. 11 Prentice Place, Medfield, Mass. Applied to the zoning board appeal for a special permit pursuant to sections 240-3C and 240-69E. The code of Falmouth to raise the existing dwelling and garage and rebuild with attached garage and a pool, exceeding 20% lot coverage by structure on subject property known as 94 Seapit Road, East Falmouth. And I have, I have it in the CPOD, La Pointe Bay. Let's see if we have comments. I don't know what that word says. Okay.
Revised comments.
Revised. Someone has better handwriting than me. No, oh, this is comments. Okay. I have Maureen, no comment. Oh, I do have a comment. Applied, this is an application to zoning board of appeals for a special permit.
Comments have to be below here.
I thought they were talking about La Pointe Bay. Sorry. See attached, and engineering, engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to the right-ofways and public utilities. A, Nichols Road is a private way in this area. B, Seapit Road is a public right-of-way in this area. The existing driveway will be removed, and a new driveway will be constructed on this public right-of-way. A driveway permit will be required. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit from the engineering division prior to closing the hearing for the special permit, or that the board include the following condition of the special permit if the special permit is approved. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division and the driveway permit. Any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. This project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property or butters or public right-ofways. Project includes drywells for the roof, as we typically recommend, and we recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Under completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address of this residence. Where this site is a small lot with work near private residences and the public right-of-way, we recommend that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project. There is a plan called erosion control plan. There doesn't appear to be any controls shown on the plan. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work, to include proposed erosion and sediment controls, and a construction entrance. We also recommend the following condition in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard document, which can be found in the engineering website. And concom, no comments. Water. The existing home has a 1-inch service fed from an 8-inch main. The water meter must be inside the home if it's not already there. Planning had no comment. This includes, assessors say this includes lots 23 and 24. And there's 24 letters of support. And that's what I have.
For the applicant.
Mr. Kim?
Mr. Finer?
Just a point I'd like to make. I went and did the site review, and the two rear corners of the lot were not staked, and the lot line was not demarcated as required. So, I feel that the standards haven't been met, and at the very least, I'm going to have to abstain from this one as well because I can't put my imprimatur or whatever on something that I didn't view, and it's required complete form. And, I mean, relative to the septic system, it's important. And, I mean, these people are all professionals. They should do their job.
Counsel address the issue as well. Counsel, for the applicant?
For the applicant, I'm attorney Laura Moynihan. Norrie, can you clarify on the staking notice? Is it the building corners or all lot corners?
I don't have a copy of that page.
Okay.
Oh, rear lot corners.
All right.
Went through the trees in the rain and through the bushes, and there was nothing.
I'm just, what, I'm asking Mr. Finer what the exact requirements are because you may be thinking it's more than it is, but you could find the, you have the hearing notice in the file. It'll tell you right on it. Because we always send the notice that we get from the office directly to the engineer that has the staking requirements on it. You don't have that in your file? You don't have the hearing notice in your file?
So, we have the hearing notice, but we don't have a copy of the requirements in the file.
Okay. Okay, would you like me to continue, Mr. Chairman?
One moment, please, Ms. Moynihan. Is the board, remainder of the board prepared to proceed without the back line being staked?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
What is it, what is this?
Isn't that the notice?
No. No, it would have been something, I would have sent it to you, but, all right. Is the board prepared to proceed? Okay, thank you. As I said, I represent the applicants in this appeal, which is a special permit application. This is the GIS map, which shows the neighborhood area, and the subject property is at number 94 at the corner of Nichols and Seapit Road. This is the existing home and garage, and shot of a portion of the rear of the existing home. This is the proposed site plan. It's showing you in the bold black the outline of the proposed new home. The existing home and garage are shown in the dash lines. You'll see that there is a setback to Nichols Road for the proposed, which is 13.6 feet. We have filed a determination from the building commissioner that Nichols Road could, can be applied as a side yard setback, which is allowed under the zoning bylaw. The building commissioner can make a determination on a corner lot that the front yard setback of 25 feet only applies from one street, so that, in this case, is Seapit Road. You'll see the pool off of Nichols Road as well as the attached veranda. And the existing conditions, the house is built about 1956, has a partially finished basement, living area. The existing lot coverage by structures is 14.6%. Overall, existing is 17.3%. The lot size is 16,125 square feet. We're zoned, that should say residential C. My apologies for omitting the C. Not in a flood hazard zone, corner lot, as I indicated. Side yard setback of 10 feet applies to Nichols Road, and therefore, any section 243C determination is not applicable anymore. The project details to raise the existing house and construct a four-bedroom with the garage and the outdoor pool. Be a white cedar shingle with white trim. Front, side, and rear setbacks would be compliant with zoning. Proposed building height is 31 feet 4 inches, which complies with the maximum. Existing four-bedroom system will be utilized. That was newly installed in 2016. And you have a referral from the health agent on that as well, indicating that he's satisfied with that and the plans as to the bedrooms. New stormwater management will be installed, downspouts and drywells to control stormwater runoff onto the neighboring properties and the streets. Proposed lot coverage is 24.96, so just slightly under the 25% allowed. Overall, would be 33.7%. The allowed lot coverage by structure by right is 3,225 square feet. So, we have an additional 800 square feet of coverage by structure that's being requested by the special permit. I think that's important in these cases to keep in mind what people can do by right without special permit, and how much more is essentially being requested on the application. I also think it's important, given the comments of the prior hearing, to keep in mind why this section of the bylaw was adopted in the first place. It was, in my submission from the town meeting discussion and the discussions of the zoning board that wanted this in place was to, to be able to regulate very small lots with very bulky structures that, that were clearly not in keeping with the neighborhood. It wasn't an issue of having applicants spend hours and hours supplying data of every single house in the neighborhood. It was more to get a sense of what the neighborhood was and what was fitting for it. These are the proposed elevations, which you have in your file. I submit it's a very attractive new home. These are the garage elevation and the rear elevation as well. Size and height of the structure is in keeping with the neighborhood homes, I would submit. We did supply lot coverage data to indicate neighboring properties with lot coverage over 20% and over 25% by structures. I would submit that the, the use of the term average is, is almost a subjective term in that bylaw. Again, it's to get a sense of what fits within the neighborhood, what is in keeping with other neighborhood homes, and not intended to have applicants spending hours and hours providing detailed data that is very difficult to get. As Ms. Murphy indicated, I think it's more of getting a sense of what is fitting with the neighborhood and understanding that there may be other homes in the neighborhood that do have lot coverage over 20%. There also may be homes that don't have lot coverage over 20%. And if you're asking for detailed average data, then that's going to be misleading and unfair to an applicant because, on that theory, no applicant can come to you to get a special permit if they want to go over 20% because there's no other house in the neighborhood that has lot coverage over 20%. But they might have lot coverage at 19% or they might have lot coverage at 18%. So, I think getting too specific is, is actually not healthy or appropriate. I think getting boxed into corners on detailed calculations like that is not what was intended by this bylaw and is not good practice. The bulk of the proposed structure is, in my submission, suitable for the neighborhood. These are some other homes. This is 27 Nichols behind the subject property, just to give you an idea of the bulk and height of other neighboring structures. Seapit, 120 Seapit. These are 156 Seapit, 174 Seapit, and 410 Circle Road, close by around the corner. So, that was just to give you an idea that there are other large homes there. I would submit there wouldn't be any adverse impacts here on the adjacent properties or the neighborhood. We did, because this is a 240-69E application, I asked the architect to take a look at the shadowing issue. And Joe Fournier, I should, I apologize, should have introduced him, is here tonight as well as, as the applicants. So, we found that doing, in his looking at it, he looked at June of 2022 from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., which would be the peak sun time, and the sun path travels from the northwest to the southeast across the lot from the, essentially from the corner of Nichols Road and Seapit Road. There would not be any shadows to the neighbors to the south or east. There could possibly be some shadowing on the southeast side, excuse me, but there is a vegetative tree line there that would, would prevent that coming off the property onto the butter. And here is that vegetated buffer in the back of the house. So, hopefully that would, is enough information for you to satisfy you. And I think if you go out there, you can see how heavily vegetated the, the neighborhood is generally and this particular corner lot. No adverse traffic impacts. There's many letters of support. The applicant did do a lot of work going to, to talk with the neighbors. The direct to butters at 21, 27, and 32 Nichols Road, and 82 Seapit Road, and a directly across the street at 91 and 99 Seapit. Those letters are in your file, and they're, they are actually letters of support. And then, I believe, 27 Nichols Road, who is the butter directly in the back, wrote a very nice personal letter of support for the project. So, I think in that, those neighbors are recognizing that this is, this new structure is a very nice improvement to the neighborhood. When older homes from 1956 are taken down and these new homes are built, it, it helps everybody in the neighborhood. It makes the neighborhood nicer and improves people's properties' values, and I think that people, the neighbors do recognize that. New stormwater management, the nonconforming setbacks eliminated, building height will be conforming to the zoning bylaw. So, those are my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, sir, with you, Jerry?
None at this time.
None at this time. Suzanne?
Just a quick one. Why does the assessors' office give you two numbers, 23 and 24?
23 and 24?
It's two lots, it says.
Joined lots.
Joined lots? I don't know, it was in the notes, though.
I didn't see that referral. Oh, I see on the plan. Yeah, it may be two lots because the one next door is 22. So, that's not uncommon in those older subdivisions. There's a lot of lots like that in Maravista as well, where houses are put on two lots.
Mark?
Again, it notes on the plans that the corner bounds in the back were found, but they weren't marked. And I went picking through the trees and the bushes, and I could not find them. And, I mean, the lot should be demarcated for us. And then, just a comment. You're a lawyer. You're familiar with the term "shall" means in Massachusetts law. For you to be dismissive about what it says in 269 because you think it might be too much work or too much information, I have to say that I completely disagree with you, and I will forever.
Okay.
So, keep that in mind for the next time.
Well-
Because it's, it's pretty specific right there. We shall consider.
Okay. And I'm not, I'm not arguing with that, Mr. Fineran. I'm not taking an issue with the word "shall." What I'm taking issue with is the word "average" as you're applying it. You're applying it in a mathematical setting where somebody is to take a set of numbers and calculate the number of numbers into them and come up with an average. What I'm suggesting to you is that's never been the policy of the board, and that's not the way the bylaw should be applied because it can come out with a skewed result that's unfair to the public. So, if you're looking at what your responsibilities are as a board member, I think you also have a responsibility to the public in terms of how applicants are supposed to be bringing these applications forward to the board. And respectfully, if that's your opinion, that's fine.
It says "shall consider."
If I may just finish. This shouldn't, in my, in my submission-
Your opinion.
If that's your feeling on it, respectfully, that's, I think, a discussion that the board should be having as a whole as to what their policy is on this moving forward. But it shouldn't be something that's developed on the back of this applicant or the applicant before me. That's not fair to those applicants or the public, where we have been doing this a certain way for a very long time. So, if that's how you feel, then the, maybe the board should come up with a policy moving forward, as the chairman has suggested, and not apply that on a case-by-case basis to particular applicants. That's not fair.
Okay. Now, you are of the opinion-
Now, you are of the opinion that average is not a mathematical calculation, and I'm sorry, I simply cannot accept that because it is. And when it says "we shall consider," it doesn't say "we shall consider your opinion." It says "we shall consider the average of the size and structures in the neighborhood." And I'm just reading it directly.
This is getting into a legal debate. Is there another question specific to the project that you have for the applicant?
I'm simply rebutting the comments because I find them to be incorrect. And...
Yeah, that's a point I believe is...
They don't concur with the bylaw. And if the bylaw needs to be changed, well, that's a consideration. We shall consider that, I said. But as it is, it remains as written. And it says "we shall consider it." So I shall.
Any other questions? Public comment. How would the board like to proceed?
Second. Whatever. Give it to somebody.
Give it to Suzanne, a second to Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
Going to be my question.
None.
Jerry?
No discussion.
How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to approve conditions?
Give it to Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second is to Jerry. Findings?
Findings, let's see, 94. It's in an RC. It's in CPOD Wacoi Bay. The existing structure is 2346, and proposed is 4,021. Lot coverage, 14.6 now, proposed is 24.96. Lot coverage with parking is 17.3 now, proposed is 33.7. Height I had on my plan was 31.4. And I think, I think that's all I have. Oh, public room.
Not more detrimental?
Not more detrimental. There was a comment from the Board of Health requesting a reserve area on the septic on the plan that was then shown on revised plans of 10/24. Twenty-four letters of support in the file, no opposition at the hearing.
Driveway permit?
We'll get that into findings, but yep.
We are in findings.
I'm finding, sorry, we'll get into conditions, yes. Any other findings?
It is.
Any other findings?
No.
Conditions?
Driveway permit.
Per plans. Do we want a height certif framing? Yes.
At 31 feet?
No, we're good.
I don't see a need for it. At 31 feet.
I was thinking, yeah.
Soil erosion and sediment controls, limited work. Driveway.
Numbers for the house?
Since they're going up to 20, just shy of 25 percent, a finding about no additions on the property.
And I think you need a cert at foundations so that you're not exceeding.
Under compliance with state pool safety regulations. Anything else?
No, that's all I can say.
Jerry?
Nothing.
Lorraine?
Do any hours?
Standard work hours.
Yeah.
State pool is the same as the town's regulation.
You have the engineering comments, please incorporate in.
Yep.
And I think that's it. Anything else? No. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Abstained.
Want abstention? Fenneren? Thank you, counsel.
Thank you for your time.
Last tonight, we have hearing 07922. Fedora, 258 Edgewater East, excuse me, 258 Edgewater Drive East, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming single-family dwelling.
Do we have to extend time?
Oh.
Real fast.
Can we extend 30 minutes?
Aye.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed?
Read the app.
Yes, please.
I have an application, 079-22, for Gaetano Fodera and Maria Pia Fodera. 12 Thomas Drive in Reading, Mass., applying to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 24-3C of the Code of Falmouth to raise and build an existing nonconforming single-family dwelling on subject property known as 258 Edgewater Drive East, East Falmouth. Get these out. Okay, I have, hmm, only comment, is it's in a CPOD Wacoi Bay? On that page? I have Marina, nothing. Conservation Commission held a hearing under a notice of intent for this project, which was closed on August 3rd. An order of conditions was voted upon and issued on September 30th, 2022. At this time, there appear to be a few discrepancies between the plans submitted in this proposal and the plans approved by the CONCOM. An additional patio and front walk are proposed, which may require additional mitigation. The homeowners have been aware of this discrepancy and the proper steps to take to permit these. Engineering. This application was reviewed for impacts to the public right-of-way and public utilities. Edgewater Drive is a public right-of-way in this area. The existing driveway will be removed, and a new driveway will be added. This work will require a permit with the engineering division. We request that the board either require the applicant to obtain an approved driveway permit with the engineering division prior to the closing to the hearing for this special permit, or that the board include the following condition. The applicant shall obtain an approved driveway permit and post any required bond with the engineering division prior to the start of construction. The applicant shall complete the work as approved by the engineering division in the driveway permit. The proposed driveway does not include the required five-foot apron noted. Note that if there is less than the five feet between the property line and the road surface, the apron need only to extend to the property line so as there is no impact on lot coverage. Any connections or alterations with public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town departments. Project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property but as a public rights away. Drywells are shown on the roof, as we typically recommend. And we recommend the following condition to be included, that the applicant must post the address on the residence. When this project falls into the jurisdiction of the CONCOM, we defer to the commission for stormwater management and construction erosion controls. We will require a construction entrance and erosion controls along Edgewater Drive as part of the driveway permits. And that's what I have.
For the app.
Don't see any letters.
Thank you, Scott. For the app.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. For the record, Kevin Clower, I am representing Gaetano, or Guy, and Maria Fodera, the owners of 258 Edgewater Drive East, where before you tonight, seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing nonconforming dwelling. This property is located midway down the Seacoast Peninsula. It's a dense, largely seasonal neighborhood, although it's rapidly changing in a number of ways. The lot is just over 14,000 square feet, which I think is fairly typical for the area. It's residential C zoning. A portion of the lot is within the velocity zone, however, the dwelling is not within the floodplain. Presently, there's a four-bedroom, single-family dwelling. There's an existing nonconformity only to the rear yard setback of the three-foot contour, which is 42 feet where 50 is required. The applicant purchased this property about three years ago. They spent the last few years assessing the property, determining their needs, and the house needs significant repair, cosmetically and structurally, and have determined the best course of action is to raise and rebuild in order to address what they're looking for. So the proposed dwelling will reduce the clutter on the lot. It eliminates the existing shed and the kind of floating deck down near the revetment. It includes a garage, which will reduce the need for outdoor parking, which is currently right up on the street. It maintains the same number of bedrooms and proposes a new Title V system. The nonconforming setback is improved. It goes from 42.3 feet to 46.3 feet. And the proposed ridge height of this structure is 34 feet, 5 inches. Due to the existing nonconformities, this does require a special permit under 243C, which allows for pre-existing nonconforming structures to be changed by special permit, provided that they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. We've gone over what the board's to consider, 24216, and whether or not that alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. In this case, there's no new nonconformities created. The only existing nonconformity is improved. The proposal doesn't really impair the views and vistas of the public, and it does fit with the neighborhood, which, again, is fairly changing. I think you have a very diverse mix of homes in that area. This project, as proposed, is a significant improvement over the existing dwelling for the applicants. It has the benefit of a new Title V system, and the existing nonconformity will be improved. There's no new dimensional nonconformities created, and there's no adverse effects that overbalance the benefits that would be realized through this project. In short, there's nothing about this proposal that's substantially more detrimental than what exists and therefore meets the standards of 243C and 24216. I would ask that the board grant the special permit, and I would, of course, be happy to address any questions that you have. If not, we can go home.
Start with you, Mark.
What about the conservation concerns?
There were some slight changes to the plans. The house was actually reduced in size. We'll, of course, have to modify our order of conditions in order to get a building permit.
Okay. And I just have one other observation. And you might have observed, I'm kind of a stickler for details, and I take my assignment quite seriously. But, you know, in the end, I'm just a poor farm boy from Vermont trying to do his job. But on the last page...
Last page of what?
The last page.
Oh, the plans, okay.
Okay, on the plans. And again, I didn't have the benefit of a classical education, but I believe that it was Kipling that said, "East is east and west is west, and never the twain shall meet." It seems like you guys got the job done here. Because if you look on the left side of the plans here, east is east and west is west.
So I think what they're indicating here is this is looking towards the east. This is looking...
Well, if you go down Seacoast shores, that's Edgewater Drive East. So the east would be the back of the house, not the front of the house.
So if you...
And they have it flipped here.
So if you look at the arrow over here, looking to the east would be looking at the front of the house, which is what the east elevation shows here.
Well, so what's the back of the house, west?
Yes.
That makes no sense.
Well, because you're looking to the west.
Oh, from the...
From the water, you're looking toward, to the west at the back of the house. From the street, you're looking to the east at the front of the house.
Wait a minute, I must have this upside down. The left side...
So this is the street, Edgewater Drive East. So if you're standing in a street and looking to the east, you'd be looking at the front of the house, which is the east elevation.
Well, how can the back of the house be west?
Because if you're standing at the water's edge and looking to the west, you're looking at the back of the house.
Oh, I got that perspective wrong completely. Sorry.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, no, it's, there's nothing else that I noticed. I did, that was...
Suzanne?
No questions. This looks like a good project to me.
Thank you.
I agree.
I concur.
Wow, I'm going to be the tough guy.
No!
So I have to ask, basement, is that going to be finished or unfinished?
Unfinished.
Why do you need a full bathroom down there, then?
Because it's a walkout basement. So if you're coming up from the water's edge, you can go right in, use the bathroom without traipsing through the house in your wet bathing suit and muddy feet. Someone with kids, I get that.
No, so, so...
You've got four bathrooms on the second floor and three bedrooms. Is there a reason for that?
Sure, you have a guest bathroom.
Each one of the bedrooms seems to have a bathroom on the second floor. The master suite has one on the first. My concern, very candidly, Mr. Clower, I'm not accusing anyone of doing anything, is that the office, storage, and playroom very easily can be, this could become a seven-bedroom house once we've signed off on the permit. Would your client be agreeable to reducing the second-floor bathroom between the storage area and the playroom to just a half-bath?
I don't really think it's necessary because I think if we have a decision that states this is a four-bedroom house, that serves as a deed restriction. That's how we've handled this in the past. Again, there's children, there's grandchildren. Having a place to bathe people, I think, is helpful. I don't think it's absolutely necessary. I haven't asked them if they're willing to do it. But, you know, I think we have a decision that states this is approved as a four-bedroom home. That serves as a deed restriction on the property.
But you would admit, though, that once we've granted the authority, we're basically done. People can...
Well, I mean, it certainly comes up if they want it to sell it, if they want it to do anything with it. There's nothing that prohibits you from having someone sleep in a guest, you know, in a den if they're visiting, but it doesn't count as a bedroom for Title V purposes. You know, the Foderas have a large extended family. They have people that come and visit them. Again, I don't think there's an issue with having effectively en suites and then having a bathroom there.
Follow-up questions?
And there are no limitations to the number of bathrooms...
Nope.
That you can have. Playroom, storage.
Public comment? Richard? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close, Eric?
Give it to Jerry, second to Suzanne. All those in favor? Aye. Does the board wish to have any discussion before running a decision?
I will just piggyback on your comments that... I can't disagree with your observations, but exactly what could we ask or do about it?
We can't. It's a discretionary grant, so that's my concern, which is, I can't believe...
It was my concern too, but I also know that there's no limit to the amount of bathrooms. And is it this opening, is that four feet?
So that, yeah, the plan, it's cased openings going into the office, the storage, the playroom, and clearly greater than four feet between the two. That's my only concern, is you've got three bedrooms and three baths up on the second floor already, and I'm just concerned that...
I would just note that that's the only bathroom that's not off a bedroom. So having, again, effectively a guest bathroom for people to use without going through someone's guest room.
The one down bathroom with three appears to be off a hallway.
Oh, you're correct. Sorry.
So two people can shower that aren't going through bedrooms.
My only concern, I have this discussion. It's in keeping with the changing neighborhood. I don't have an issue. It's just that this continues to come up, and my concern is that people just, once they've got these, just turn this into a seven, eight, nine, 10-bedroom Airbnb. This is the only opportunity to address it. So I don't have a problem with the project, and I think it looks very nice, but it's a concern.
There really is no avenue that exists at the moment for us to address it in any fashion. Is that not...
Well, we could ask for a reduction in the bathroom, but makes it... Well, it's a discretionary grant, absolutely. I'm not proposing that. I'm just getting my concern on the record.
I never read them, you know. I mean, I've been through this three times plus, and I just never saw any limitations. And, you know, well, I mean, it's time for, you know, a discussion at another time. But, I mean, storage, playroom, office, five, six, seven.
I'm satisfied with the response about the basement. That does make sense, and I'd rather have it inside rather than outside.
Oh, that makes perfect sense, especially if you're the one cleaning up.
Kudos to that one, Kevin. Are you satisfied with prepared vote, Mr. Potamus, or...
Yeah, like I said, I see no avenue for me to express my dissatisfaction that you haven't covered.
I do think the board's protected by conditioning it to be four bedrooms.
I'm not disagreeing, but just don't want you to have an unexpected outcome, which is why I'm...
I appreciate that.
We're getting a little discussion.
So I guess my question to you, Mr. Morse, again, is how strongly do you feel about this?
I think you're going to get it regardless of how I feel, which is why I'm just trying to get a sense. Mr. Potamus?
I appreciate what you're saying, but I think the deed restriction, you know, we're not enforcers of other things.
I'm all set.
Okay. How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
We close.
Do we already do that?
Do we already do that?
We'll close.
Motion approved.
Give it to you. Is there a second?
Second.
Give it to Scott. Findings?
Findings. It's in an RC zone. Didn't I say Wapoe Bay, actually? CPOD Wapoe Bay, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Lot size is 14, 280. Existing structure is 17, 27. New structure will be 28, 24. I don't have it with a percentage.
19.9.
19?
Point nine.
Point nine? Proposed?
Yes.
Okay. Height is 34.5. I think that's about all I have.
Do we need to check that for it? Oh, that's a condition.
Public road? That's all I have.
It's been reviewed by the CONCOM.
Nonconformity is sidelined to the shed at 3.6 feet. Ten is required rear yard. Three feet contour, 42, 50 feet is required. They're eliminating the side yard nonconformity. They're improving the rear yard nonconformity. Testimony is there is no bedroom increase. They're proposing a new Title V septic. Good enough, kudos on that. Thank you, Kevin.
I didn't propose it.
CONCOM...
The Fish, thank you, too.
CONCOM indicated there was some discrepancy as to the plans. They're going to be resubmitted.
Do we want that? He can't get a building permit, so we don't have to follow up.
That'll be conditioned. We don't have to, yeah, that can be conditioned, probably. Any other findings? Conditions?
For plans?
Mm-hmm.
CONCOM?
For CONCOM, plans?
For CONCOM approval?
Yep.
I think that is...
Engineering?
Yeah, driveway permit, language, either obtaining the bond or approval, stormwater construction erosion controls.
The five-foot apron? I don't think that comes under CONCOM. The proposed driveway does not include the required five-foot apron?
We just incorporate the engineering comments.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Incorporate the water comments. Line needs to be added to the plan. Upgrade it to one inch. Meter needs to be relocated inside the house if it's not already done so. Details on the plan need to show for the water line, as it may be within 10 feet of the septic, so just incorporate the water comments.
Do you put no garbage disposal?
It's up to the board of health.
It's up to the board of health.
It actually listed them on one of the things today.
It's listed here, basically, for design, so wouldn't that be a condition of the...
Per plans. That's per plans.
Yep.
Let's see.
You don't want a height certed for any...
Yep.
Yes.
It does say in here that the basement shall not be used for a bedroom.
Yep. Add that to a condition. Anything else, Norine? Jerry, anything else?
Nope.
Do you want hours?
I'm sorry?
Hours, it means it's a dense neighborhood.
Standard hours, yeah. The standard construction hours, materials off the roadway. If not, need to work with the police department. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? That's a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience tonight, ladies and gentlemen.
If you would give me 20 guesses as to what might be a holdup on this application, the bathroom count would have been my 50th.
Just trying to keep you fresh. There are certain things that bother members of the board from time to time.
That's all right.
We haven't had a shed discussion in a long time.
All right. Moving on to open meeting agenda items. Minutes of October 20, 2022. Are we prepared to act on those tonight, Norine? Minutes of October 20, 2022.
I don't think we've seen them.
I'm just kind of going by my mind. Was there an email that I didn't get? All right, that'll be tabled. Board updates. I will report to the board that we do have a new full-voting member. The selectman-appointed former town council, Frank Duffy, to the board as a full-voting member. He will be joining us hopefully at the next meeting. He could not make it tonight, as it was reported to the board of selectmen, or by the board of selectmen. There's probably no one in town who knows more about zoning and has an institutional memory of projects quite like Frank Duffy. So I think that's...
Thirty-nine years.
That will be a very solid, strong addition to the board. Any other board updates? Board discussion. I think we need to get on to the discussion about the, how the board is interpreting, what Mr. Finner has raised several times, under the bylaw about averages. So as well as the issue about the staking of lots, I will say for the record, my experience on my time on the board with demarcation of lots is that out of 40B, clearly they demarcate the whole lot, because it's usually brand-new construction of the entire thing, and we need to see what we're actually talking about dimension-wise. My experience with special permits generally is that it's the demarcation of the proposed work, and then they will go to certain lot lines to show where the nonconformity is. So, for example, if there's supposed to be a 10-yard, 10-foot side yard setback, and there's only three, they will stake to the edge of the lot line there so that the board could say, okay, here's the nonconformity that they're talking about as to this particular setback. So I can't...
Well, that would be, these would be the first ones that I have not seen the owners demarcated. And, I mean, when they find the bounds, generally it's been my experience that they hang up a ribbon in the tree to...
Sure.
I mean, I was out there in the rain looking, just because I feel obligated to until you tell me that I'm not supposed to know the restrictions of the lot. I mean, it's...
I think part of the issue could be, what's the significance of, you can maybe, of the admission or something like that? I mean, it's, if it's not there, it's not there, but, you know, if it's...
If the rules require staking of the lot lines, then the rules require the staking of the lot lines, and it needs to be completed.
I'll double-check.
Yeah, if it's in the application process, it's got to be adhered to.
And at that point, I'm more than happy to say, well, this is going to be a contingency.
Maybe, maybe I was assuming too much. But as I say, every visit that I've been to thus far...
It's a valid point, Mark.
Everyone, and sometimes I've been twice, and it's the, these are the first ones that weren't there.
No, it's a valid point. If the rules require it, then it's going to be insisted upon.
And like I said, I mean, and sometimes I'm too much of a stickler for detail, but I don't, in a job like this, I don't think that's actually possible. Because some of these things are going to end up in litigation, and I don't want it to be my stupid mistake, because I can guarantee you that as long as I'm sitting here, I'm going to go to every site and I have so far. And, I mean, I don't know what anybody else does. I know people use Google Earth, which I don't use Google at all.
The policies of the board require people to make a site visit to every application. So that needs to happen.
I don't necessarily run around the yard. I definitely drive and I go around.
Well, you didn't want to go to a...
It doesn't stay to the extent that you do, but it requires a site visit.
Don't drop an off coffee or anything.
Going through the neighborhood.
So, I mean, can we have an answer to that sooner rather than later?
I'm going to direct the zoning administrator to send an email out to everyone regarding what's the specific, if it's not to anyone's liking, then let's put that on an agenda item. We can modify the rule.
Because in the case of this one, the septic was very close to the lot line. Hence, I was curious, and like I said, it was boring, and I was out jumping through the trees and the bushes, and I could not find them. And it kind of pissed me off, because I was all dressed to go to Boston, and I had to go home and take another shower.
Regarding conflict of interest and disclosures, I know we've had a couple. Just as a reminder, our appointing authority is the board of selectmen. If you can recuse yourself from a hearing at any time, given that we are not quite a full board, I would just ask that, as people take a look at permits and applications, that if you realize you have a conflict, just to let Norine and me as the chair know in advance so that we make sure that we have quorum, and if not, we can make arrangements with applicants to continue or otherwise. If there is a situation in which you have a potential or what could be perceived as a conflict of interest, you need to file the disclosure with the board of selectmen. They will make a determination with input of town council as to whether or not it is significant or not, and then whether or not you can continue to go on. If it's a conflict of interest, you can always contact the State Ethics Commission attorney of the day, and they will give you a quick opinion as to whether or not it's a conflict or not. We're still a small community, and from time to time, these things come up. So I would just always err on the side of caution tonight. Thank you, Jerry, for doing what you did.
And I know from my experience, the AG's office always refers you to town council. You know, they'll...
That's the other. You can always ask for an opinion of town council. And in doing so, if you are relying on an opinion of town council or the...
You're safe.
...opinion of the attorney general, or it could be the State Ethics Commission, and someone makes a complaint, you're covered at that point, because you're now relying on an opinion of outside.
Well, we can go backwards just for a minute.
Sure.
But again, I go back to 69E, and I know, and so do you, you're a lawyer, in Massachusetts, shall is the same as must. And it says right here that we must take into consideration the size and height of the structure in relation to the average height of the structures, and size and height of the structures in the neighborhood. And, I mean, these things were put in there to keep this place from growing out of control.
But the response they'll give is, how? It's blank.
I feel driving is a consideration.
And that, yes, and that's, and like I say, the practice has always been, is during your site visit, looking around, is to just say, okay, this appears to be in keeping, or this is something that appears to be three times the size of the average of their houses in the neighborhood. So it's not, it doesn't require...
You just said it. Average is an arithmatical calculation, and it can't be done without numbers.
Yeah, I think the other part might be the language issue in that the board has looked and interpreted that as usual. In other words, like not looking at a mathematical average, but looking at, you know, how does this fit within the context? So I guess the question is how you parse out the words.
My suggestion might be, is I think there might be times when telling an applicant, you need to show us, give us some hard numbers on this, if a project clearly appears to be much greater than what is...
Though we may be able to go back and look at the language and what the debate was when this came in, to see if that will give us more instruction.
Good point.
It's going to mean it...
Because I guess the question is...
In this instance, the consideration may be easier, and, you know, you can even say it's possible to just look at them. But in other instances, on these smaller peninsulas or whatever, I just can't see how you could come up with an average without doing the math to get there. And I think, just read it, the way I read it, we're instructed to do so.
We have bulk density, we have other, sorry.
But you can't dismiss any portion of it.
Not dismissing it, just giving it less a priority. No?
You're dismissing it.
No, I think it's good if you find out why that was incorporated, if Norine finds out why.
See if I can get some further information or clarity of that.
The average data point is the average data point, right? How much we weight that on any given application is how it weighs.
It says consider. And, I mean, we just have to do our job, that's all.
And to speak to your point, though, Mark, is that under the, what the criteria is, I can't remember the last time this board asked the question about, how is this project going to impact affordability of housing in this town? And that's also clearly in it.
Right.
So perhaps it's, you know, we might want to get out a little cheat sheet about what the criteria is to approve a special permit out, make sure we're hitting each of the questions.
I mean, you're going to find me to be a hair splitter, in case you haven't already. But, I mean, I take what I'm doing seriously.
No, I don't think anybody thinks you don't, but, and I'll go out on a limb. You don't have to say it 10 times.
Whatever, just...
You're going to find, I am going to move these meetings along a little further. With contested hearings, I want to give people the chance to speak, but I'm going to start being a taskmaster as to time, as I indicated at the last meeting, so...
And then the seven-day thing, too.
Yes.
I mean, again, we got somebody that submitted something on the 25th, and, I mean, if we don't draw the line, they're never going to.
True.
I mean, you know, I mean, they have their own interests, and we have ours, and it's not ours, it's everyone in this town. It's not just them. And I won't be schooled by someone who's, only interest is forwarding their customers' benefit.
Fair point. And I do agree with the continuation issue. And I would tell you, if there were not butters or butters that were represented, then at that point in time, you've invited them to come here. They sat all night, and then you say, go home. You know, so that's, I think, the only thing, is that you have to continue, because you can't reward late submissions.
No.
But that you can't disregard the butters, because we typically find when we continue hearings, most butters don't come out to the law.
It's about 50 to 60 percent.
Because it's, you know, too much to track or whatever else it is.
In the case of these, they're only going to walk it around the corner.
Right, right.
But, and they could have had some better pictures from a different perspective.
That's not discussion.